I was waiting for it to stay recorded before I start talking. All right, I guess we'll go anyway. You're unmuted, we are recording. So we will open our morning workshop, look at the county board of commissioners. All the commissioners are present, we will start with the public works update. Go ahead.
Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda. The first is some carryover for me. Speaking of that, I'm also proposing to take vacation next week. I was assuming you weren't having bored on that next week. Wednesday. I see that, I will not be here, but that will be here.
I doubt anybody else will be in the, in the building either.
I think so. So with that, we also have item 12, which is a contract and contract bond for Olympic roofing, for the jail roofing project. We also have a contract retainage bond with day wireless. There are tower people. It takes too long to get their retainage back, so they're gonna buy. That has nothing to do with us, that's a state thing. And then we have item 16, which is a request for waivers for a bait for the rental of the Clickitack County Fairgrounds. I'll give you guys a little, we also have another waiver that will be coming next week. Probably it's from the Christian Cowboys. Little history on our waivers, what we've done in the past, doesn't mean we have to do it now. We've never given a waiver for a Fourth of July event because they charge people to come in. We have given waivers for the Christian Cowboys because they do in time work. Again, that's your decision, not ours. Courtney Road, oh, sorry, I just got carried away. Go ahead.
On construction, Courtney Road, they're paving this week. They're not planning to be on site next week during the holiday for paving and then we'll resume on the 10th.
How far have they got up there?
They've got black asphalt on everything.
Everything's black.
Everything's black, so they're dropping back now to do the second lift, starting where we left the B S T to the end of the project, hopefully have that done this week, and then they're gonna drop down to 14 and do that second lift, starting on the 10th. So everything's paid.
And it's looking good?
Yes.
Yes. Let's see, Rock Creek Gold Day Bridge, the contract documents will be before the board hopefully next week for signature and execution. We can get started on that project. Slope flattening, guard rail, contract bond documents have been sent to the contractor for their signature. And traffic counts continue throughout the county. On design, white plastic edge lines, we're still waiting for a decision from Washita whether they grant us those increased funds for covering that difference in what the bids came in for. Curve warning signs and guide posts, still waiting for approval to go to add from Washita. We did have a conversation about it on Monday. They needed one little piece of information additional, and hopefully we're good to go. However long that takes them to come back for that, I don't know. Data collection project, contract negotiations are complete and the documents are being put together so that we can execute a contract with the consultant. Pickled in a highway paving project, environmental documentation has been forwarded to Washita for their approval and construction documents are being put together currently. Sundale Old Eight, the right away plans are being finalized and we should have offer letters out shortly to all those residents that we'll need right away from. Another preliminary work has begun on some new projects that'll be coming up for next year, we've got three bridge repair bundles that we were awarded, a bridge replacement project and a overlay project that we're gonna start the preliminary work on. And engineering staff continues to assist the maintenance crews with their road projects in the Pickleton area.
Speaking of that, the attached to the back of this is what, what the road now looks like in Pickleton. There's two pictures, the first one's from the east end, the other one's from the west end. And Pickleton through town is now ground up. The crews are putting back, rebuilding the road, putting it back, lowering the grade a little bit so the drainage doesn't run into the buildings, runs away. And then they will chip seal it in anticipation of the overlay that's coming. Later on this summer. Okay, speaking of that, the crews are working in Pickleton. The east side crews, both east side crews are in Pickleton, working on the Pickleton Highway eight widening and overlay or rebuild section and in town. West End, they're patching in Glenwood this week. We have, we have a couple great, we have one greater running in Pickleton doing what's left of the dirt roads that we do once a year. County Services Building, nothing's really changed, we have the health scheduled for August. Part of that is, is because our carpenters have to go in and cut out the sheet rock, we wanna be able to put it back. It's not to do with our contractor. Let's see, jail roof replacement, we had the pre-con last week, they're still scheduled for September. Dispatch basement, just a few minor items which will be complete tomorrow, that project is done. Fairground events, we have a, I'm not even gonna try to say it. We have a 15th birthday party. There he, see, I knew somebody could say it. Yes, Inceanera Birthday Party at the fairgrounds on July 8th in the cafeteria. Annex four, we're actually doing a little more in Annex four, been working with Erin. She wants to get a bigger waiting room and things like that, so we're doing a little bit of remodel. We're gonna actually bring in a painting contractor to repaint the annex. And that's gonna happen July 10th and through the 14th, and then the floor covering will be the 17th to the 21st. And that will be complete then. Sadus Pass, the tower installation was, they were supposed to start yesterday, they called, they couldn't make it, they're supposed to be in today. Hopefully they will. Okay, a few follow-up items, I got a request from a member of Glenwood, just giving you the heads up to do some work in the park. We have never, since I've been here, never really done anything in the Glenwood Park. It's off of Bird Creek Road, it's a, like a five acre piece, it's pretty much all wooded. We have a picnic table and light there and a trash can. I don't know who emptied a trash can, we just haven't done anything, but I'm just bringing it. We've gotten a lot of, a lot of requests this year to do, to do more work in parks. Wishram, Clickitack. Dallasport, now Glen.
What is Glenwood wanting you to do work, are they, or work as in mowing and dumping the trash, or work as in, how about, why don't we have a playground?
Playground, and some, you know, we'd like a little bit more maintenance, you know. And I just told him, I'll be honest with you, I don't have the people to do that.
Where is it?
It's off of Bird Creek and Trout Lake Highway. I can't remember the name of that road, there's a road that leads into it.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go, Pine Vista. Yes. It's a wooded track there, it's about five acres.
Oh, wow, I didn't even know that was there.
Yes, I'm not sure how it got, became a park, but it's been a park since I've been here, so.
Does anybody have any memories on that? I didn't even know.
Never heard, you know, I was talking to Jeff before you came in, I remember the day, back in the day, when we did a lot, forty thousand a year, I believe, from the landfill money. And the communities were, were able to come in and ask for what their favorite project of the year was, and they knew that they could allot it. And it worked really well towards the parks and what that community wanted, and then they allotted that money. And then there became some struggles a little bit because the fire departments and stuff started piecing out the money, so eventually we ended that program. I think it's too bad we don't still have something.
That was the Community Development Block Rep Program, and I've been fighting to get that re-instituted.
I would love to have that re-instituted, I think it was valuable for the people and they appreciate it.
A little more.
Definition.
Tighter boundaries on who can apply, would be fine with me on that discussion too.
Well, budgets are coming.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to your attention because they are putting together a petition and I'm just kinda giving you the heads up. With that, we'll kinda jump around, we also, because we do do things for a lot of the communities. So I've been our Clickitack, we've always, we're gonna do it again, this, they have the Clickitack Canyon Days. We mow, there's a parking area they have over by the booths. Public Works usually mows that, and we will again this year, they've asked, so there's not a fire danger. I think their, I think their Canyon Days are the 28th, if I'm not mistaken. So we'll mow that before that.
If we can go back to parks really quickly.
Okay.
We obviously have parks that we know about and parks that we don't know about. We also know our park plan is severely outdated. What is our, your timeline and motivation for updating our parks plan? And getting a list of all these parks and, and literally going through a parks plan, which I don't know if everybody's familiar with, I'm going through it now with Goldendale, where you list all the parks and what you would like to see in your overarching vision and not if you're ever gonna get all these things done, but it, it puts the community vision for the park and each park in your park plan. So that that way, hopefully, when we do budget for things, we can have a six-year parks plan or whatever.
If you want it to be a higher priority, we can do that. I can, you know, I'll put together a list of the parks. I'll be honest, you know, anything, any improvements we do, now we have to maintain, and that's the bigger thing for me.
Well, that's a budgetary expense for buildings and ground.
Yes.
But that, that is a budgetary expense, there would then be a policy decision by this board, if we so choose to do so, we would probably need to hire another buildings and ground person. There would be a parks maintenance, whatever, facilitator. And we'd have to factor that into whatever we were doing with the parks budget, but I know what the parks plan, like the, the Dallasport Park that they would like to apply for granting on. Good luck if you do not have a current parks plan, which is why we're redoing the Goldendale one in time for next year's R C O grant. But if we don't, as a county, get our own ducks in order with our own parks plan, then we are, we get to tell communities like Dallasport next year, sorry, we didn't, we didn't get it done, so there's no sense even applying for the grant, and I don't know, I'm not, I'm not that guy, so I would rather get it done.
Well, we could work, we'll work.
I'm only one vote, you would need a second vote for that.
I mean, we could work on that, I was thinking about bringing something forward anyway, to, you know, during the budget time as an option, to let, you know, let the board know that in the past, I mean, we've kinda, I'll be honest, our level service has gone down this year, so I don't have any summer help. We used to hire summer help. First of all, it's hard to find summer helping, that's, you know, it isn't just, it honestly, it isn't just a financial thing, they're hard to come by. We might be able to come by, but we used to have a summer help person that would do, that would run around and do all the mowing at the parks. We have quite a few, you know, we have Wishram, we have Trout Lake, we have, and that usually kept at least one person. We used to, and when we were at our peak, we had two people. You know, not advocating for that, I'm just, so I'll bring that forward in the budget time this year, what it would cost to, to actually give a better level of service. But honestly, right now, we'd mow the parks, don't get me wrong. And we do take care of them, but it takes one of our regular guys, which means then I'm working my supervisor a lot of extra hours because he's out doing a lot of the work that that person would normally do, but now that person's having to mow.
Are, are boat ramps considered parks? Because they're on the capital or non-capital, right?
Yes, they are, we don't do anything for maintenance of those, but those are considered park facilities. That'd be part of a recreation.
So technically, if we, just thinking outside the box, if we decided to go with some parks, six-year parks plan, whatever, we would probably end up pulling those boat ramps that are on that plan over to the park plan. And taking them off the capital, okay, I'm just trying to get my thought process.
Yeah, you'd be looking at one in Lisle and probably wanting to click that, right?
Okay.
I think it's important we become proactive, I've set in on some recreation meetings lately and there were people actually asking the Gorge Commission, the Forest Service to slow down. We're so overwhelmed on the parking lots on Highway 14. So it's gonna take effort by everybody, but if we have space available that's denoted a park, it's gonna start getting used.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Bicyclers, hikers, they find those places to go.
Well, depending on the park, if it's, if it's just five acre wood lot with a playground in it, I don't know that the tourists are showing up at it, but.
You'll be surprised.
Well, yeah, the Forest Service, yeah, into that, but you know how I feel.
It's U S invites, everybody come here, we all love it, come see it.
But we're not gonna provide any parking.
But then what, what do we do with it?
Yes. Okay, that covers parks, we will move on to, we haven't been able to find any flaggers in, for the Goldendale area for a Pickleton project. We also have one of our employees that has to have knee surgery. So that person is gonna be out most of the summer. It's not, no injury that happened at work or anything. And with the state, you know, you can get three months A leave now, through the state, not through the county. So that person's gonna be out for three months, we would like to hire back one of our retirees because we could actually find him if he's willing to work and has a C D F. He can only work, he's limited to what he can work, so it'd be a week or two here and then another week or two, like a couple weeks a month, I think is all he can work. But we'd like permission to hire him back.
This also brings up something that I was thinking about today, is how do we cover shifts for people that are out on their new three-month F M L A? Which I think we're gonna have to have a board discussion long-term and policy decisions and, and whatnot, and or funding in place to cover. But I'm assuming this would be road funds, not general funds.
Project.
Asking us for money.
No, I'm not asking.
Self-funded in your road department, you'll make it work.
Yes.
And with that clarification, I'm okay with it.
I was just asking you, because we have to get your permission to break anybody off. Um, to kinda cover that, we've actually dealt with that a few times now, where people been out. We had somebody out last year, three or, you know, it's not written very well for us, the employer. Because as you're, you know, they, they were out the whole summer.
In a large department, that's one thing, but if you, if it's in a department that's got, you know, four employees or three employees or something, or two employees.
Yes, it can be very painful.
My goodness, we better have a pack out plan before.
Well, we ended up having to do, because it was in an area where we have a very limited amount, you know, it's in our facilities group. So we only have three maintenance techs in there, so if one of them's out, which this one was most of the summer, all that means is, and we, you know, all that means is the supervisor stepped up and he ended up working a lot more than normally he would have to, so he was spending a lot of extra time, because, you know, he's got his job and then plus he was covered with magic. But I give a lot of thanks to our supervisors, they're really good guys. Jail entry. The jail entry is coming, they have these, this tile in front, it's carpet tiles. And it's one of those things, you know, we have on the list, you never know when they're gonna come apart. We try to get to stuff before it does come apart, but sometimes, you know, you, you're limited to what you can do. Just by, it's, it's not an endless source of money or time. Well, those have come up now, so now they create a trip hazard. So we're putting together a cost of what that project will be. We're gonna try to get it through, because, you know, we would, the inside needs to be done too, but we can push that off to next year, that's not the problem. It's just the outside, so we'll get a cost of what that's gonna cost, I think we could peel them up and glue on some stuff, I don't wanna make it throw away, because I only wanna do it once. But we'll bring a cost when that comes. Just kinda letting you know that that's a project we do not plan.
Are you thinking outside company, or are you thinking our?
We're gonna look at it, see how easily they come up, if not, you're looking at somebody like Denny's or, you know, Oliver's or something like that. It's a small area, but, you know, I don't know, we'll, we'll bring it, we'll bring you a cost. Here in it. I know there was a question about a purchase, we have to purchase freezers and water required by L. So you'll see stuff that's, they usually decode it to groceries. But it's water for the crews.
I answered that one, she could have just answered my email.
I know.
Because I didn't even think about that one, because, yeah, your, your water has to be served at a specific temperature according to what it's high, and yeah, no, that makes sense. No, we're going through the bills this morning, I saw a bill in there from Buy Mart for $4.29 for a chest freezer and like $3.50 for groceries. I sent an email over and I'm like, what is this? But now that you say it, yeah.
That would be chest freezers. Got a good price on the chest freezer, water not so much, that's a pallet of water. We've applied for our D N R fire waiver, we do every year. We are usually pretty successful getting it, we're just giving you the heads up. We're gonna handle it like we have in the past when private contractors work. And, you know, now, years ago, we never used to affect work within, you know, what we do. But somehow or another, we got roped into timber work, so it's no different for us than it is for now, it's anybody that works outside falls under the fire restrictions. Our reason I'm bringing it to the board's attention is, it has an only effect because we get a waiver. The private guys will not get it. They just, they won't give it to them. So what that means is, is we just tell people, we're, we don't police it, it's not our deal to police. But if somebody's building like a short plat road and our inspector drives by and it's a, you know, 12 o'clock shutdown, he'll just stop in and say, hey, you do realize we're at a stage three, you're supposed to shut down it, you know. He won't shut them down unless you would like us to do something different. But it's not our regulation, so my thought is, is we don't, we just give them the heads up, so we don't become responsible. At least we've told them, we don't go out and look for that, though. If he just happens to be driving by and somebody's out there working, we've now gone to a, you know, noon shutdown. We will tell them unless you have a fire waiver, you should shut down, and, but that's all we do.
How does D N R have control over shutdown on non-industrial timber grounds?
That's a good question.
I don't, how, how does that work? I don't see how they, they, where does their jurisdiction come from for having that off timber lines?
Yeah, I, I don't know that either, be honest with you.
Because that would be our, that would be our local fire ordinance.
That's what I thought too, but they control what we do. We can't even chip seal or work on the roads.
Do we get a?
We get a waiver.
But do we get a state permit from them?
We get a waiver from D N R.
But do we get a permit?
We don't know.
But this is a new development in the last couple of years, like it was some kind of legislative thing to pass.
It was, it was a legislative thing that passed, I wanna say five years ago, six years ago.
See, this is a new development.
This is fairly new because actually, we asked, because we couldn't get a waiver one, they refused.
Yeah, I remember that.
And we asked Dave.
But we've gotten waivers before that, right?
Yes, and we got one last year. The year before that, we didn't get one, they just refused. And so we pushed, I think we actually talked to, I think it was Dave, or we might have even talked to Jim, I think it was during their time, the previous board to go talk to Hillary France about trying to get, finding out why the heck we even fall under this, why does it matter to us? We're using the equipment you use to fight fire with. Because I said, if it goes to a four, we're done. I got guys sitting around the shop. I don't foresee that this year, I don't think we're gonna get there, but, but if we were, you know, if we, but so far, we've been fortunate enough to get the waiver, but the private guys, and in the past, it never affected that type of thing unless you were working on timber lines. But the last five or six years, it has affected that.
So does it affect everything? Does it affect people's private rock crushing operations that need D N R permits? Does it affect people that are putting in water pipelines on, on property, like? What is and is, how do we find out what is, what they have control over, especially if we're gonna tell people, oh, if you're building a short plat, you have to shut down, but the rock crushing operation in the.
No, we don't tell them they have to shut down, we just tell them, you know, be advised that you could fall under this, because we don't regulate that, that's what we've done so far. The way we've been told is, if you fall under, if you're within that, that D N R's fire responsibility zone, which is most of Clickitack County, you fall under their, their fire regulations. So only except for way out east, do we not, where they would be in charge of a fire, if a fire started, you have to abide by their, you know, their fire code.
Do we know our other counties doing this, following through?
I will check with other counties.
Thanks. And if you could find the law that passed or legislation.
Well, look, we'll look that up, I mean, but like I said, we've, we've gone every year since then, because we've been told you have to get it, you have to get a D N R permit or you shut down. Or get a waiver.
Get a waiver.
More good news.
I mean, if D N R wants to, if, if we have to shut down our contractors and D N R wants to pay for the shutdown, fine.
Well, our contract, we tell our contractors, like, like Dean, he has to get a waiver. If he wants.
But they don't get, but they don't give them.
Well, they give them to him, because he's big enough. I don't know if they'll give them to the small guy, but they'll give him a waiver. Because he's gotten them before, he says, I'm working on Courtney Road project. Now, I'm not saying, okay, that was my play on it, I don't think they would give him to like, if I wanted to build my own little road, chances are, they're probably not, they're gonna tell me tough, they're not gonna give me a waiver. Because it's hard enough for me to get a waiver, you know, for us to get a waiver. And, and like the, the contractors, like, you know, James Dean or something, who do a lot of work, they could probably are eligible for a waiver, because literally to get a waiver, they have to come out and look at your equipment. They literally come to your site, look at your equipment, make sure you have the fire trucks, you got the, you got the extinguishers in the vehicles, you got the proper amount of shovels, the whole nine elements.
Okay.
Anyway, we got, okay. Another quick heads up, speed limit has been lowered in Lisle on 142, at 30 miles an hour, they actually, D O T did that. They also placed a crosswalk across 142 for the parking that they have for that park and, or that ride that.
They did put a crosswalk in there, huh?
Yeah.
That shocks.
Yeah, we were pushing for that for a while. And one other thing, we met with the, with the chamber for community days, and they've asked if we would open up our parking lots for community days around this vicinity here, around the courthouse. And I said, well, we'll talk to the board, what they would, and my suggestion is, is we pull the vehicles and put them in Annex one during that time. If that's okay with the board, we'd send out an email, tell everybody they need to move all the county vehicles out of there. Friday, they're gonna close Court Street, that's not our deal, it's their street, so they're gonna, they're working with the city, they're gonna close Court Street.
I guess that's just kinda weird to me. If we plug all our vehicles into Annex one, that takes away the parking lot on Main Street. Because community days goes all the way down there to that Annex one.
I, I asked them the same thing.
And they were okay with, with that, losing that parking spot to gain either this one or the bank parking spot. That's just interesting, same number of parking spots, but.
Yeah, we asked them.
I think you're gonna find very few people parking in this one, maybe the next one and the bank one, but interesting.
Yeah, they asked if, because they, you know, they asked if we could keep all these in this vicinity, and I asked the same thing, because you have the car show down. And their response was, well, we've been doing it for years, we had Annex one there, so we couldn't park there anyway, so. Because I thought the same thing, I thought, you know, what difference does it make here in one side or the other? They asked.
Whether they're unplugging a parking spot here or over there, and they're actually specifically asked for this one too?
Yeah, they asked for all the stuff around the courthouse. Did the bank part? Did the bank parking lot this way? They were not concerned about any, cause they said, look, we'll fill up most of the annex.
Are, is you recommended to make all staff that has vehicles shuttle them over them themselves? Or are you gonna have a public works person doing shuttles?
I was gonna ask the people to shuttle themselves.
Uh, yeah. Um, thoughts on that one?
You've talked to them.
Say for the most part, I, I don't have necessarily have a problem with it, other than. I don't know that I find it. A good use of staff time. Uh, I'm not opposed. Uh, yeah, you're not hearing any opposition, I guess, so it sounds like.
We'll put out an email and ask everybody to move them before. That Friday and hopefully, you know, if they're out driving around, when they're doing, you know, they're doing something, they just park them over there and then they don't have to. Take an extra trip to go downstairs, move them over. Sorry, Alicia.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's all we have.
All right. I don't have anything. Do you guys have anything?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Not used to us being forced out.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is a code compliance update. Go ahead, Mr. George.
Ready code compliance is currently at thirty-seven cases of seven since my last update. Uh. Six new cases are code violations and one is a nuisance complaint. Uh, one complaint was denied and set to, sent to appropriate authorities and then. Out of those thirty-seven, three cases are pending the completion of my reports, uh, to be closed. And then, uh, we have a. Uh, a nuisance case on four hundred series, uh, woodland. I didn't put woodland in there. Uh. Had been requesting a site inspection for some time. I concluded a site inspection would, which revealed the removal of two semi truck trailers from the property. These two trailers were the most significant hurdle due to the size and extensive damage. I think we spoke about this previously or they were, uh. In order to remove them, I think they, they had to cut them into pieces, the trailers, so. Uh. This case was opened in twenty twenty-one, which was, which Lem Pratt estimated had approximately a hundred vehicles on the property. Um, as of now, I estimate work completion at about ninety-five percent. One year and eight months have subsided since the case was opened, in my opinion, showing how voluntary compliance. Is slow, but ultimately beneficial to the county as. The removal of hundreds of vehicles, including trailers, travel trailers, semi-trailers and meniscus items have been. Would have been very costly. Um. I think there's like five junk vehicles and then most of the other stuff they're addressing. So, I mean, if you drive past the property, honestly, I think you wouldn't take a glance at it. So definitely, uh, touch up at this point. While on the topic of voluntary compliance, cleanup has commenced on a property on Olson Road. Two complaints were filed regarding unsecured trash blown onto surrounding parcels. The complainants also alleged that the household garbage was attracting rodents and flies. I visited the property shortly after. I witnessed unsecured trash blowing off the property and onto Olson Road. Attempts were made to locate the owner via mail and phone, but failed. Uh, with the help of the sheriff's office, I was able to speak with the property owner, allowing him time to reach out, uh, to his previous tenant to return to clean and. Clean up the property. Um. After months of no progress and, uh, more litter lining section of Olson Road, which is a county road. I issued a deadline before issuing a citation. Uh, the owner reached out to me before the completion of the deadline, agreeing to clean up the property himself. Uh, further inspections showed slow continuous project, uh, process. Improvements and improvements, uh. Multiple. Uh, informal complaints have been received regarding leaked or dumped sewage in Roosevelt. On numerous occasions, I've driven in, uh, to attempt to locate, but have left empty handed. Upon arrival, the soil has been undisturbed, dry, no presence of smell or discoloration. As of now, my department has been addressing allegations of dumped or spilling sewage on a verbal complaint. Uh, with the request of formal complaints being filled out, uh, as soon as possible and, but no one has ever followed up on submitting a complaint.
Um. So with that one, you get somebody that calls you and says, hey, there's sewage. But they never end up filling out a complaint.
Usually what I'll do is, uh, it, I'll ask them, is it ongoing? And if they say yes, then I'll say, all right, I'll go take a look at it just to address it as soon as possible. And I have, uh, I ask them for their email or, uh. Mailing address so I can send them out a complaint form, or I ask them to stop by in person, fill it out and. I'd say, good majority of the time, people will say yes and, uh, but then there's no follow through.
It sounds like this one almost is like RVs.
RVs, yeah.
Um, and, but if there was actually sewage, you would find it.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I would say, I don't know, it's part of me saying, I understand going to. A house with a septic that's supposedly gonna leak. Um, or, or has a leak, but to chase down RVs that are just parked in the side of the road and dripping and somebody calls in a complaint and.
Um, Roosevelt has that, uh, RV park, um, and I don't know the restaurant's name, uh.
Uh.
Uh, so there's multiple RVs in that little section, uh, to estimate like. Eight, nine RVs, uh, and then there's a property owner that allegedly doesn't house people. Uh, next to the post office. And there's a, a good amount of them that. In my opinion, are, are being lived in. And, uh, I've received a lot of complaints from people saying, hey, you're not, you're not doing anything and it smells like sewage every time I go pick up my mail. So that is.
So they're calling on, is it the same people calling or are these multiple different?
Just different people, yeah.
Calling on the same location, but you could go to the location and never finding anyone.
Few times it's been on the same location. Once it was, uh, right next to the restaurant.
On the north side of the road?
Yes.
North side of the road, restaurant, south side of the road.
That's, yes, south side of the road, sorry.
Hey, south, I didn't say north side of the road, it's Republic, so.
What, one should be off of, uh, Ju- Juniper, Juniper Street. Another one should be. Oh, man. Should know my roads in Roosevelt. I know.
I still don't. They make a good chicken wrap. I know that.
I like their street tacos, but.
Um. So are there trailers on the property there behind the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm looking at. And are they, and, and do they have, uh, CUP or anything? We know of, or, or a RV park?
From memory, I believe I. Asked planning department, I said yes, but I can verify.
I just don't see where the, not much septic would be going. Roosevelt doesn't have a septic system.
Yeah.
But they do have a septic system, right?
So usually that's the only reason I drive out there is, is there's a higher risk of, uh, sewage being leaked, but, uh. At this, at this point, what bothers me more is that I. Well, I, I, I foresee issues if something does come up where I was, I went out there trying to be reactive, but then. The public doesn't follow through with submitting complaints. Um, which actually is a good segue into the next part, um. I'm working on the re- revision of the complaint form. The main changes I want to include is the rename of the complaint form to a grievance form. As I have found that complaint is received negatively and oftentimes receives with the mentality of, I'm not a complainer or. Well, I'm not complaining, but, uh, another change would be the addition of the, of, in, uh. To add a section on the form for your email address, which would allow me to. Communicate with parties quicker and exchange comments slash updates in real time. Uh, notifications of opening and closures would still be done through mail, just for policy.
Complaint versus grievance. Legal terms. You may want to ask the prosecutor.
Yeah.
And I sent you a, a legal capture of.
Yeah.
You may wanna find out if that's the right.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I should say, everything would have to be the same. So, yeah, I don't think you just shoot one without.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a. It's an idea.
Might have to get crafty, but.
Would it make more sense to possibly have one be a nuisance complaint versus, or a code. Violation complaint, you know, so that you're creating a separation between code and nuisance? And using a different word on those two rather than.
Use the word concern.
I don't know.
No, not if you sign a new name to a paper. I guess it, it goes, kinda goes back though, um, usually, as far as I know, we don't investigate something unless somebody's put something down in writing. And so you have thirty-seven cases, you're driving out to Roosevelt multiple times. Uh, shouldn't we be waiting until we actually have a, a, a written complaint before driving out there? I know you wanna be Johnny on the spot and do your job, but. Um, if you drive out there and find something and some, until somebody's not willing to turn it in, now you're in this position.
I think the, the catch twenty-two for him is, is. In the same regard, we got him running out on a property on ninety-seven that has septic next to a well, but nobody still, to my knowledge, has filed a complaint. So it's like we want him to be. Um, to go out without complaints or solid waste issues. Um. But like I said, this one's a little different. It's RVs and not. Uh, it's obviously something that's a lot harder to document. So do we wanna require the complainant to actually provide us proof? They go take a picture or.
Yeah.
Um, or, you know, hey, you know, my, my RV at the end of hunting season, it ain't leaking, but she stinks. Um, and are they just walking past a bunch of RVs that haven't dumped their holding tank in three weeks? Um, and, and so I guess I'd say I'd hate to. We gotta figure out something because if you're on a time wasting mission, we need to remove the time waste. But I don't know how we get there.
Yeah, I did, I didn't wanna point that out, but that, that actually was the main reason why I kinda. Took the initiative of like trying to be proactive on these sewage cases was Highway ninety-seven was, I think, a very. In the public's eye and, I mean, a lot of it was like, why didn't you do anything sooner? Why didn't you, you, um, so. I'm trying to take these cases where, you know, the essentially either the threat to the environment or life potentially be in play that, uh. A little bit, uh, more reactive to.
Well, that was my question on, is this multiple complaints or is this just one household next door that has a problem?
For, for sewage, it would be one, but even as we know with ninety-seven, even one is. Hard to come by.
Right. Well, I'm talking about the Bickleton thing. Is this just one person complaining about the RVs or that's why I asked the question or? Multiple residents, this wasn't just somebody attacking their neighbor?
No.
Um, kind of scenario. Uh, no, I, I think I would be fine with you going and investigating, but eventually. I think you're gonna have to put your foot down and say, you're gonna have to send me some pictures of some stuff on some grounds because I've been there five times and I haven't found anything. Uh. And, um, you know, that's, that's a good half day.
Yeah.
Anyway. Uh, to go out there and not be able to confirm anything and then no complaint and. Uh, so, yeah, interesting. Okay. Yeah, I don't know how to answer that. We did, we didn't give you an answer, but.
I just think it's, it's all a, a matter of, every case is completely different. And as people describe it, I mean, people. Exaggerate at times, but you'd never truly know. I mean, the way that they make it seem is, you know, sewage is just spewing out by the gallons. Um, I, I haven't seen it, so.
Well, they could see a drip from an RV and just automatically assume it's sewage when it could be just absolutely fresh water.
Yeah.
Uh, so. Yeah, is what it is. Did you, um, did staff provide you the copies of the flow charts that they had found and looked up? Hopefully, I don't know that we're gonna have time to. Necessarily dive into that today and actually work on it and change flow charts and adjust them how we would like them to do and all that, but. I'd just say it's perfect. So just make sure you've kinda went through them and, and have your ideas. Um, that we can work through on. For our flow chart. Uh, one thing I wanted to cover is it was brought to my attention that you had overtime. Is that correct?
No.
You did not have overtime.
I have never applied for overtime. It's just been all regular hours.
And I won't even discuss.
Yeah, no, um. Yeah. I have, nope, never applied for overtime.
Never worked more than forty hours in a week, where you're perfect. That's all I'm asking. If you did. Watch your hours and make sure you don't.
That'd be lovely. I mean, I would take overtime anytime.
That's what I'm saying. There's nobody budgeted for that, so.
No, no.
Uh, I was gonna say, make sure that don't happen again, but if it didn't, that's fine. Just watch your hours, make sure you're on your, on your time there. And then you stay on your budget and all as well. Um. Did we wanna have discussion on where we. Would like to place code compliance and their what director? Do we wanna have that discussion today or?
We have time.
Well, we have eleven minutes. Uh, he needs a manager. He needs somebody to facilitate his budget. Uh, he needs somebody he can go to that's not us. Um. So, yeah.
Well, we've had this discussion.
And that's why we have the community services director position that's still currently open.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I think we, we're gonna have to talk about the budget for natural resources and economic development. Who's gonna help build that budget to get it to the gym? So. I see this as a little bigger conversation.
Well, that's if we still put it in the community services department. Which is my question is putting it back and building.
I think if we wanna have that discussion, we should probably invite Lynn down.
And as we move into that, um, community services. You know, we're in a holding pattern until we get through that. And currently where we're at, he's, that position's been in building for time immemorial. Um, as long as I remember. So if we can just have status quo for a while, it's when we get time to make those decisions and budget decision. It's a bigger conversation.
Well, that's what we did last year, you know, we budgeted. It still sits in buildings budget.
Mm-hmm.
And because we were trying to figure out, we said we'll take over oversight and management to get the, the. Organization running smoothly and to get the, um, code updated and, you know, things that we still haven't done yet. And we need to get moving on that code update.
Well, in last year, I. I guess I could say I could understand or sympathize. So I agreed on, yeah, fine, put it in the community, whatever relations department. Um, but I've since, I guess I would say changed my mind.
What do you think?
Lynn's gonna hate me, but it's always been in building. It's always been there. Uh, having some economic development, natural resources slash solid waste slash code compliance slash, I don't know what other island of misfit toys we can put down there in that department. Um, I don't, I don't think it does us a whole lot of good finding a director with skill levels to entertain them all. I think it should be in building. And I think management should be in building. And I think the financial oversight should be in building. And I think that director should be the director overseeing code compliance. So I'm one way, he's the other way and you're tossing.
It makes sense to me because it is in the job description. And that's where the, uh, code comes from for the most part with coordination with the Health Department. Um, it's functioned there for years in Dunwill. Uh, we are in a big transition all over the place. And if we could have a status quo to see how we could make it work and make it function for at least another year, so we can get somebody on board and see how much they can handle. And how appropriate it would be to take and put him under Community Services when all the code and stuff is coming out of building and health anyhow.
And his office is still up there.
Yeah, it's, it was confusing for me that we were adding it to the new community service program. I didn't especially agree with that. So on Lynn's part, if we could have just status quo now to give us the room to build that new department, build that new person and get them going, but yet still have the assistance of the Building Department under the job description where it's been for thirty years.
They are, the Building Department's status quo right now is Lynn is to facilitate the budget, but no department oversight, not the director of. Um, surprise, surprise. So it's a matter of do you want us to continue for the next year to be the director of code compliance? Or are you? I, I guess I needed more clarification of where you're coming from. She's here to find us.
Yes, she is.
I am.
I'm aware.
I'm, I'm fine with status quo for another year. But I don't ultimately feel that it should stay under me because I feel that I cannot offer the protection to his position or whomever is in that position that it deserves.
What do you mean by protection?
They don't have a safe job. I'm not the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
I cannot authorize him to carry a weapon. Sheriff's Department can, I cannot. He's come up on convicted felons, people like that, that I have no business messing with or have one of my employees dealing with. I just don't feel adequate to meet the needs of it.
I agree. The world has changed since Skip crime.
Exactly. It's vastly, vastly different than when they wrote it originally. I mean, it, the world has changed, the topics have changed. It's just a lot, lot different. And I don't feel prepared to properly manage that position. I wasn't trained in code enforcement. I was trained in building codes. And code enforcement was up there, but I did zero with it. So I don't even have the experience to go on to say, well, this is how we did it. I mean, I saw it on the outside when.
Right, but where I'm coming from is if the choice is here or in community, whatever, whoever we hire down there knows absolutely nothing.
Right.
About it. You've got far more. You may have lack of experience, but you have far more than whoever we hire for that.
Right, but I, I'm uncomfortable with saying, hey, go out there. You got a phone and a clipboard.
Well, and I've had some questions about that moving forward as we dive into this to make a final decision, uh, for certifications and things that I believe George needs to be out there giving these. Uh, I think there's some things we need to follow through on that I've seen that I wanted to question. And a lot of those do move closer to the sheriff's law.
And we had originally kind of worked towards that. Frank and I had done a lot of groundwork with the Sheriff's Department, just asking them if they would be willing. And then it didn't go that way. Um, but there are jurisdictions that that's where it's housed and it's mainly because of the enforcement portion, the safety portion. Exactly. I'm just saying, I cannot cannot guarantee his safety. I ha, I can't. I, I mean, I have no authority to say, yeah, go ahead and protect yourself out there. And that makes me very, very uncomfortable.
So my vote is let Lynn hang on for a little bit, not even a year maybe, but let us really.
Right, but are we going to have a director or are we still gonna be the director? All she's doing right now is facilitating the budget.
But I think we all agree that there needs to be a director somewhere for George to report to. And we need that appropriate person for him that is gonna protect him plus directing.
I don't know laws. I mean, I don't know any of that stuff. I know building code, but I don't know the laws about how to serve someone properly documenting for serving so that it goes to court correctly and doesn't get tossed. I mean, there's a lot of that that he has to know that I don't know.
I will say off, officer's safety, now that I've done this for a while. Officer's safety is a big one. I mean, I, I feel co, I feel comfortable with my own abilities, so I, it doesn't scare me as much. But I could see how if someone else took a position, they weren't allowed to either carry or, um, knew how to, uh, act in certain circumstances, um, where it could be a really, it could go bad pretty quickly. I think there's, I saw I there's one time I knocked on the door. It was a guy with a warrant, which his house ended up getting raided like a couple of days or weeks later. And then another one on Troy Lane, I believe there was a guy who's, who I was out there just doing my own uh, document, taking pictures. And then turns out there was a guy from the DOWs wanted for attempted murder, I believe.
Right, but that's, that's everywhere. The code enforcement person in Goldendale deals with that. Uh, the woman that's the code enforcement person on the DOWs that actually applied over here for a different job.
If, if I can, but you some of the places that I go to, e- even my radio doesn't work. My cellphone, their cellphone does, cellphone doesn't work. Uh, sometimes I have to drive up up the hill or wherever I'm at just to be able to use my radio or use my phone. I mean, when, when you start thinking about it, like, you know, I use the sheriff's office quite a bit. I, to skip trace people to let them know where I'm at. I mean, it does make sense in some degrees, like, and if I were to use God forbid, to be in a use of force, I can guarantee you someone would go after me and be like, where's your credentials? You know, what? I mean, I, I do lean on the sheriff's office. Like, obviously I was qualified through the sheriff's office and I, I know the use of force and like anytime that they provide training, I'll take it, but, um.
So do you know who the code compliance in the DOWs and the other one you spoke of are under? Are they under their police department?
I think they could, they, uh, so Nikki, I believe, is the, the DOWs. She does, she reports to the city, City Hall, I believe.
But we could find out what department for sure. Or this could be a question for legal counsel. Where, you know, giving us direction, where do we make this decision? So we make the right one.
If I'm getting legal counsel, I want legal counsel that's pointing to an RD, RCW that says where it should go. I don't want a policy opinion. If there's gonna come back as, there is no RCW. So that means it would come back as a policy opinion and this is the board that makes policy opinion. If there was an RCW that it had to be in building or had to be in sheriff or whatever, it would already be there.
Okay.
This is a decision we make on how we want that department to be facilitated going forward. And then we put it in the appropriate department that we think is gonna best achieve the agenda of the policy that we're trying to um, facilitate. And so, yeah, okay. Um, sounds like status quo. You're doing the budget, but you still have no director and we'll have to talk about it and dive into it more on a workshop or something.
And I commit to diving in and looking into where some of the other ones are placed and why, and the certifications that I'd heard about that you might need. And then we'll come back. We won't let it kick the can down the road too far.
And Mo, and Mochi and I, you know, we're always available to help him with our portion.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, so that's, that's never an issue. Um, I, I will help in any way I can. I just don't, don't qualify to be the director of him ensuring his safety.
But if that was our choice, you'd be okay with it. You just wouldn't like it.
I'm not gonna say that, but.
Talk about the redheaded stepchild here. Here I am, no one wants me.
You're not redheaded, Mr. George.
Good try.
I just don't like the fact that I'm sending someone out there for something I feel not qualified in handling. I don't understand the laws. I don't understand those portions of it. I understand building.
And I see situations that George will have to soon visit in our community. Probably it's coming with sewer situations and some things I would knock on their doors.
Yeah, it's, uh, it, it helps that I, uh, so I worked, I worked, obviously I worked in jail for a bit and it helps that I know a lot of. I have rapport with a lot of people from the community. And, uh, but, uh, yeah, if it wasn't that way, it yeah, I don't know. Code compliance is definitely very unique. And I rely on a lot of people, not just the sheriff's office, I mean, building, planning, health department, public works. I mean, I interact with them at least once a week, it seems like.
All right. For pastime, is there anything else for these fine people?
I would like to put this discussion on for, um, add this to our next, um, workshop.
Thank you.
Done deal.
I think that's the best place for it. I have plenty to say.
No, mostly.
I love you, George. That's why I wanted to say.
Keep up the good work.
I'm good, yeah.
Keep plugging along. You're doing fine, sir. Alrighty, eleven o'clock. Now that it's eleven oh four, uh, Economic Development, Natural Resources Department update. I don't know who's doing what, but bring it on down. We'll let Lynn go first for natural resources.
Hi. So basically we have, uh, lead entity projects, uh, the Dry Butler Grant and the Switzer Grant. And that's about all I have to offer today. Lead entity, um, we are still in the midst of our, uh, grant round or the girls didn't like my acronyms last time, SURF Board, which stands for Salmon Recovery Funding Board Grant Round. Um, we had our technical committee or Citizens Review Committee on the fifteenth and they approved all three of the projects that had been presented. Um, the little bit of a snag that I'm having right now is that we approved projects in a total of one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars and I haven't really gotten final word from the, the entities that were helping us with funding on these projects.
So do we recommend these to the board and they vote yes or no? Or are they actually look at the projects themselves and pick the winners or losers?
That's our job. So the SURF, the Citizens Review Committee, um, puts her forward a ranked list. Like Board of County Commissioners puts forward our ranked list.
I haven't seen a rank, so.
We, we just finished it a little while ago and I was working on that, remember?
I was gonna say, but if it's coming from the Board of Commissioners, that's this body.
Yes.
I, I don't know anything about it.
Yes, so once the applications are done.
This board, which means at least two out of three commissioners. Correct?
Authorize the projects, but the ranked list that gets submitted based on the ranking is from the, um, the CRC, and that gets inputted into Prism as the ranking. If you would like that ranking to come in front of the board and to have us do that, we can do that before we submit it. We could do that up until July, I think the end of July.
Well, I get that. I'm just saying that if these are decisions that are supposed to be made by the Board of Commissioners, they need to not be made by the director of a department or by one commissioner. They need to be made by the Board of Commissioners. And the conversation needs to happen. It needs to be open and transparent in front of the people. And then the decision that's made is the decision that's made. But it needs to be done, correct?
They actually get approved and ranked by the Citizens Board and that's what they're put in place for. They're a diverse board. Uh, so that they get a look from everybody. They put them in there, they rank them. And when they come out, then we see them. We don't wanna see them before they're finished.
Who presents the projects?
They all apply like a grant round. And then they're presented at the boards and they move their way through the different boards to see if they qualify.
For every culvert that gets done or uh, whatnot, they would have to fill out an application and submit it to that board.
Submit it to the department and then the department runs it through several boards. There's technical committee, uh, there's several rankings or several technical things that goes through to see if it's gonna make it. Then it goes to the Citizens Review Committee to say, what do you think's most important for salmon recovery in our county? And then they hash it out at the table and they rank them for we think this one should get the first crack for funding. Then this one will be our second priority. This one would be our third priority. And that's what they tell the state. If you're gonna fund us, we as citizens believe this one should have the first funding.
I understand that part. My point is how do the projects get to them?
They apply.
Anybody can apply.
Projects? Yeah. They apply.
They'll have an open grant round and everybody will get an advertisement. And so here come the applications. Um, and then they have to come in and present their project and defend their, their application with the different boards.
It's a long process. Takes about six months. And then they also need to be consistent with our salmon recovery strategy. We have two different pots of money. We have lower Columbia dollars and mid sea dollars. Um, where we're kinda like that, um, outlier, um, much like how George feels because um, all the other counties, so all the way Skamania, all the way to, to um, Pacific County are part of the, uh, salmon recovery region that it's one process. They do all their applications and everything. What we do here in Clickatat County, we've done, um, and there's only a couple of other counties that do it our way, is we get an allocation out of the dollars from the region uh, from both the lower sea and the mid sea dollars, and they're for different species of fish. And then we come up with the money that makes, in the ranking. So there's actually two separate processes. There's dollars for the white salmon. And then there's dollars for the Clickatat and everything to the east. And then the dollars from the east can move into the white salmon because there's mid sea fish in the white salmon. But white salmon money cannot move into the mids, eh, into the, the Clickatat. Because there's, there's no lower Columbia salmon stocks in the Clickatat. They're all.
And as they move through the boards, they get a healthy look because the boards are set up under RCW to be diverse. You have to have irrigators. You have to have tribe. You have to have farmer. You have to have, i- it's a diverse board, each one of them. And you have some pretty heated conversations at the tables as they move on. And some of them get kicked out.
And then at the same time, you're also going through, the other part of the process is the, the state RCO has their own technical folks that come down and go on the tours and they provide comments. And then in order for a project to actually make it through the process, so we can rank it, but the project could still not get funding by the state unless the state technical review panel authorizes it saying it's a good board. But I think where we were going is Lynn was just about to tell you which projects were what and what the ranking was. And then this board can agree with that. And if this board agrees with that, then we can actually go fill out the pardon in Prism and say these are the ranked lists.
However, I am not, I haven't really input the ranking into. However, I am not, I haven't really input the ranking into the system yet. Because there is a bit of a question about funding at this point. I just heard from, um, Steve Manuel this morning. Um, he's talking about a hundred and twenty-four thousand for the, um, lower Columbia. We have, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the projects.
And we, we also have the leftover dollars.
Yeah, there was, um. It's still not gonna be quite enough. And then, um, there was some talk from the lower Columbia that they were, were going to, um, kick in another four hundred thousand dollars. But at this point, they're looking like they're not going to because a couple of the projects that they thought weren't gonna make the grade apparently did at the last minute. So I'm still kind of waiting to get the final word on exactly how much we have coming in. Because at this, at the, at the end of the grant, at the end of the citizens review ranking meeting. Um, you know, we felt fairly confident we were gonna be able to fund all three projects. At this point, I'm still kind of, things are still a little bit up in the air.
And so. Usually this would, or the next meeting in front of the commissioners is when staff presents the list, which. You, I hope you do. And then at that time, we actually have the ability to throw out any of them that if we don't think it, it matches. It has never been done, but be being that we are the electeds, we do have the ability to do that. Do you wanna tell them about the projects?
Um, sure. I, I was just gonna throw in one extra thing, the actual deadline, final applications in the system was actually midnight last night. So.
So that is for the app, the completed application and then it locks it down and they can't make any changes to those applications.
Correct. So basically, um, one of the projects was for the Upper Rattlesnake Creek Flood Plane Restoration for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that is considered in the White Salmon Basin and I believe that was, uh, Columbia Land Trust.
And that was ranking number one.
Yes. And then Howard Lake Road, Upper Clickcat Flood Plane Restoration was five hundred thousand dollars and that was brought forward from the Yakima Nation. Lower White Salmon River Conservation Acquisition was another five hundred thousand dollars and that's just for RCO asked. That is not the total amount of the project. They have matching funds. All of these, these different entities have matching funds. That was also brought forward with the Yakima Nation. The Flood Plane Restoration Project has been kind of an ongoing. Um, project that's had different bits and pieces added to it over the years. And, um, the Lower White Salmon River Conservation Acquisition Project is a new one. They're talking about acquiring project, um. Property, everything downstream from the former condit dam site.
Whose project is that?
Yakima Nation.
So it's. Saving fish by acquiring land?
Well, preserving the. Natural aspect of, of the property.
Shorelines.
To keep people from, you know, developing and building. Um, and I think their ultimate goal, from the way I understand it from David Lindley when he was doing the presentation, was to. Um, preserve it for, um, fish habitat as well as. Um, you know, there was, there was an unwritten. Indication that, that people would still be able to go in there and, and fish and, um, use the river for recreational purposes.
Would you like more information on any of these projects?
If I'm ever gonna vote yes on them, I'm gonna need it.
I will be happy to forward you a copy of our minutes.
Why don't you also send him the project overviews that we sent out to the CRC that has the entire project?
Sure, I can do that.
And then maybe next week we can have a discussion.
Sure.
In order for you to vote on it? I mean, usually it's a thumbs up or thumbs down. Move forward.
If I need a discussion, I will get with our acting natural resources person. But thank you, sir.
So we have to get this inputted into Prism. With the ranked list. So we probably need to have a discussion in order to do it. We don't put it in, no projects move forward.
You're allowed to have whatever discussion you would like, go ahead.
When do you have to have it into Prism?
I just spoke with my grant manager, our grant manager, Martin, this morning. And she understands that we're, we're kind of in the process of trying to sort the numbers out. Um, I told her that I would try to have that done by next week.
Right, but the, the date, you should have a piece of paper that has the date that it needs to be. The ranking needs to be turned in on Prism. The applications are complete, but the ranking needs to be turned in. I know mid sea is going in July. So I think it might be the end of July where that ranking has to be turned in. I can't remember the date.
How did they come up with the ranking? So all three projects are submitted with no ranking criteria to this board. And then this, this board debates them and comes up with the rank, is that correct?
There's an entire, uh, rubric that all of the members of the TC fill out ranking sheets. And that's out of a hundred points. And then on each three of them, and then the TC gets together, they forward it to the CRC, the citizens review committee. All of them rank it on their own ranking sheets. That also includes community values and that's out of a hundred and five points total possible. And then at the end of that, all of that gets averaged out and then so that's how you come up with your number one, your number two and your number three. Sometimes there might be ten of them.
Well, and it's, it's a design of the governor's salmon recovery plan that started years ago. And it had its whole chart of how it filtered down and then it made the county in charge of it. And under RCWs, each one of those boards had to be correct, uh, created. And each one of those boards are directed what their job is. And that ranking is their duty. And then we set people on those boards to trust them, to filter through these, to dig through them, to do everything they do. Come up with the ranking and then bring us their best ability.
I, I understand that, but I've also. I've never appointed anybody to any of these boards. Well, I've never been asked to find anybody. I've just signed a pen to names that were given. So. I understand where you're both coming from and we can move forward.
To answer your question, Commissioner Anderson, the date for, uh, submitting the final ranked project at least is August the fourth.
August. And the names that we sign off on are usually, oh, by the way, these are expired and we're having a meeting next week. So please sign these so we can have a meeting next week.
And I'm fine with the ranking as is, knowing what the projects are with an actual stream restoration, which is on the back of the fish. Versus land acquisition. Um, especially if you're having budget shortfall, I'd rather see best bang for the buck and put it on the fish for number one.
So I, I hear what you, you said earlier, Commissioner Christopher, uh, the question of. Is changing the ownership title on a piece of property. Is that actually helping fish? Because we are getting a lot of those projects that come through that are acquisition projects. There's been a lot of discussion over the years internally from staff on, are we actually protecting fish? Because we also have the Shorelines Management Act, the Curlicular Area's ordinance. You have a bunch of other environmental, uh. We have buffers, setbacks, we have all these other things that help protect fish. And so what is the best, the best place or the best name to protect fish? And best way to do it? And that's, you know, staff, we've always said it's actual projects on the ground. The Upper Rattlesnake Project, um, that is being proposed is on, um. Land that was a previous surfboard. Application in order to buy. And so the land trust bought the property on a previous application. Now they're going through and now they're doing stream restoration within it. To enhance pools and, and, um. The, the channel, the stream channel. And so that's all the other reason that they like to use is that, well, it's a lot easier for us to do restoration if we own the property. Then we're not working with the landowner, we are the land. But when you ask the question, is that the best place for the money, um, we've had many of those discussions and I completely understand where you're coming from. But it would be good, I think, um, if we can get that information to Commissioner Christopher. And, uh, we have till the end, so maybe in two weeks, uh, we can have you go in, um, and we can take a vote, uh, on the ranked list.
Make sure you get that information. Like, any more conversation about that part?
Well, and just to be clear too, this is something that's required of us to do. This is not something that just a natural resource project that we've entered into and we're deciding how to save fish. We're required by the state to have this whole process and do this. It was handed down to us.
And so our natural resources, uh, project coordinator position is funded out of these dollars. We get the capacity dollars to update that, that salmon plan. If you'd like a copy of the salmon plan, we could get that to you as well. Um, but that is a significant portion and that used to, we used to bring in sixty-five thousand a year. And now that's bumped up to ninety thousand a year. And so it covers a significant portion of that position. Anything else natural resources?
I do have a couple of things, um, with Dry Butler. Um, I was able to finally get us current. Um, on our progress reports and, and payment requests. We're up to date at this point, today. Switzerland, there was a new grant amendment effective July first. And it's a time only extension to December thirty-first. There's still discussion, there's a target for the end of July for a broader amendment to submit a larger budget. And there's a meeting that Richard already spoke with you about last time on July eighteenth with Benton County Commissioners. And that's all I have for now.
Okay, so for economic development, uh, bottom line upfront, I wanna ask if I can pursue an integrated planning grant. Department of Ecology for the Clickcat Mill Site. Um, from this last Thursday, the Clickcat Mill Site, I've had since our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. Uh, had a couple of meetings with, uh, both the Department of Ecology and, uh. As well as state parks. And so with the integrated planning grant, they're up to two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, they open them July eighth. And they close August fifth, early August. And so that two hundred thousand dollars, you know, it is a competitive grant. Um, the ask is up for two hundred thousand dollars and the request would be to do, um. Vertical drilling and then horizontal drilling off just a couple of, uh, spots on the concrete pads. To see what the current levels of contamination are underneath the concrete pads. Because the, the environmental site for the, uh. For the testing was just kind of south of, of the, our one last remaining building and the environmental covenants. Only apply to that one specific spot. They don't extend over to the concrete pads. So the idea is with the Snyder Creek Restoration that's been proposed by Mid Columbia Fisheries. If there's, if there is any disturbance, uh, of the concrete, does that make the county liable? There's a lot of questions, uh, with that. As, as I spoke with ecology about it. They had indicated that based off past uses of the buildings that were on those concrete pads, that the risk would be low. Uh, but that being said, uh, I, you know, I, I wanted to refer the Assistant Attorney General for Ecology. Ivy Anderson, I referred her over to, uh, our prosecuting attorney, uh, David Quinnell to get his. So they could do legal talk and talk about liability issues and everything. So the integrated planning grant would do, that would be the one piece of it would just be the, 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 the drilling. The second piece of that, um, which is what I like, is the land reuse planning that's gonna go along with that. What are we gonna do with that, everything on top of that concrete pad? What could we do in the future as well as the community engagement portion of that? So whatever comes out of that plan, we can get kind of a stamp of approval from ecology and I think that would also, I guess. You know, the way I look at it is that would also allow us to have an extra layer of protection as we move forward. And, and bring that land out of trust and bring it back and work and work. So. Um, and then the most recent meeting I had with, uh, with, with that site was with state parks earlier today. Um, about again, moving their, 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 uh, their trail southwards, um, or towards the highway. And so they're gonna be speaking with the PUD about that because they're, they're tracking what we're trying to do with the property as well. So we're trying to get everybody on the same page, but that's my one request for the day.
Is, uh, is a grant match to this grant and will it be in budget or are you gonna need more than this grant will fund?
From my understanding, there's not gonna be any, any, uh, match request. Yeah, so. That's speaking with Ollie. I still need to go through the guidelines, but it is gonna be popping up here quickly and I need to get it. On minutes. If there is a grant match to it, I'll, I will come back immediately and, and I can tell the board about them. You know, because that's gonna be a big portion of it. I wasn't able to find it. Uh, but ecology does all the work, so they're very good at paying themselves. These types of dollars. And so just like they did for.
But it's a matter of whether we want to assume the risk for whatever they potentially buy.
No, I, I sat in on that meeting. I think it's a good way to go. It's gonna pay for things we need to do. There's no forward movement if we don't.
Okay, thank you. I just need to get a part of the minutes that it's okay for me to before. I just, you know, I gotta bill provided part of the application. Um, moving forward, still working on the CARB, Peace Community Aviation Revitalization Board. With the Columbia Gorge Community Regional, or the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport. Uh, still working on the point oh nine. Pleasure to ask for our upcoming July twenty-fifth meeting with Casey Peta. Uh, we recently, in the last week, we had a, another meeting, our first initial meeting for the, uh, regional innovation hub. Through the innovative cluster accelerator program through commerce that McAd had gotten. Um, and then I've got another meeting with, um. With Jessica, this upcoming, Jessica Metta from McAd, coming up this Friday, I think it is, on just everything that we're doing with, with McAd. So on, and, and how to move all of these projects, uh, forward. Because, you know, we have broadband with the WSU extension, that's, we, we have some, uh, some timelines that we have to start hitting. Uh, upcoming in August and August is gonna be on us here pretty quick, so, um. And then, yeah, for city engagement, um. Still looking at assisting the city of Vingeon for the economic development planning portion of the curb grant. Uh, something they just wanna do their own economic development strategic plan. Um, and so they wanna move that to left as far as timeline, so that might be. I might be hitting that up here in July or August as opposed to September, October, when I had originally anticipated. Um, and then for Goldendale, they are complete with the incubator space. They're just doing some, uh, kind of some cosmetic stuff on the outside of it. Fantastic looking building. Um, and they're looking at coming up with the policies, the city council is gonna be coming up with policies and everything like that. In regards to how they administer that building. Um, but I would suspect that that's gonna come out this fall. It is when they're gonna start going out to. Start getting applications for people that want to inhabit those spaces. So, you know, are they gonna just split in two? Are they gonna split into four spaces of two thousand square feet apiece? You know, we're, you know, they're still deciding. Um, and then the last but not least, uh, in Alderdale, we have a business expansion opportunity. Uh, with one of our large agricultural, uh, companies. And so I'm gonna be assisting them, uh, in that regard, mainly acting as a gopher. On different connections and everything like that with, with, with the state and various companies, so.
What is that? More details about that?
Um, well, currently it's, uh, they're looking at for natural gas. So I'm, I'm trying to assist them with a good contact for natural gas. I'm familiar, I, I gave some contacts that were not updated because I've, we have the main, uh, pipeline here, I think it's Williams Pipeline. I have some contacts with that, but that's a few years old and those people aren't here anymore. So I'm trying to find a good contact for them to discuss with the ag company. And, and they have, we're in the very initial discussions. That's, that's my first piece. But it's for energy, it is gonna be for energy needs, though.
They producing, not using?
Uh, no, no, they're gonna be using some energy. They need some energy, so, for processing, ag processing.
More jobs?
I'm hoping for more jobs, yes. And then that's it. That, that sums up everything, uh, since our, our session. Week, couple of weeks ago.
Good? Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you.
Anything pressing for us? Oh, do you want to mention consent agenda, item number six, which is the Bingen Water Line? Could be pulled and done separately.
Engine water line and then that's number six. And then I would like to. I would like to pull number fourteen as well for a short discussion. Don't have any issues with any of the others. And then also, I don't know if you guys had seen the email from the prosecutor. I'd like to add the discussion on outside council to unfinished business, if that works for both of you. Is there anything else?
Let me check my most. Did you want updates on Skagit County somewhere?
Do you want to do that? It's just an update from, do you want to do that now?
Were you able to sit in on Zoom either of you yesterday?
I was outside the area.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see. Actually, the meeting went really, really well. And Skagit County recognized their long-term relationship with us and the value that we've all been in this partnership. They had quite a few questions for staff again yesterday and decided they wanted more time to go back and look at some things and some new things had been developed with the drop side for the garbage for the man that holds that loose. So they they set it back and I was really pleased with their consideration and the conversations.
So I got that, I saw that email from Rabanco's manager did. And it seems like Waste Management lost the site that they were planning to use as the drop spot.
I don't think they ever had it.
They had a lease option on it, right?
I don't think they ever had any paperwork. They just told us that they they had a lease contract and the owner was never planning on.
And that's what I understand with it too. And the owner wouldn't be under chat, under.
I think there's far more investigation going to be happening on that one.
Well, and there, there was a lot of questions about the concerns of what I found concerning actually was the idea that there were infractions and non-compliances by, but there was never ever a compliance notice issued. Never. It was always just work between Republic and the staff realizing and sometimes Republic did notify the staff there was going to be a problem there'd be and there'd be garbage on the ground. And then they would find ways to mitigate it and go after containers and get it picked up as quick as they could. So it was just an ongoing relationship. Staff did say this week that it was basically two months was the worst part of it. That all came down to COVID years. That all came down to, so pretty much Republic's representative was able to answer that yesterday to the commissioners that those containers are in now with the help of Clickcat County, we have the secondary dump site in Calitz Counties. Yeah, they did a good job.
My hope is is what I believe is happening or has been happening is staff has wanted to change companies. So staff is doing everything they can to change companies, including not investigating very thoroughly what has been proposed by all. And now they're starting to become some holes in some of those proposals. So my hope is that the commissioners are slowing down to actually investigate some of those holes so that they can actually know what they're talking about when they make a move. And then if that's the case, we have a chance.
Well, and you know, it's a hard thing. One of the commissioners did say yesterday that we we hire staff and we hire qualified directors and we expect them to do a good job and bring things to us and we we don't aren't in the practice of micromanaging them.
Was that wrong?
No, it was the other one. But they all agreed that they need to take a little more time with the things that it came to light. And I think giving them that consideration that they need to do that, you know, we, anybody could face that situation. You know, when I first came in, I was talking about strategic planning, how important it was. So everybody knows their job. Everybody knows their position. You all work together as as a concise machine and a team. And at any given time, as the elected officials who are the strategic planners just kind of let things drift, you you could come into a situation where a department starts moving a direction that isn't the direction that commissioners and that relationship becomes foggy with who do I report to or who am I answering to? So I think they're stepping back and taking a look and asking some more question, honoring their director, but asking some more question. And I appreciate that from them.
Did Waste Management respond to the to the statement that that they don't have a dump site or a place to flip trailer?
Waste Management relied back on the history. At that time, when this infraction problem happened, they didn't provide these things. They didn't have these things. We always have. We can offer it.
Right, but if they don't have a place to flip containers for.
No, they did not address that. That that was after the fact, after the discussions happened. A manager from Republic brought that email forward that had happened that day and a copy of that email from that landlord had gone to the county commissioners. So Republic stepped up to the plate and said, we want to make sure you've seen what's happening here and that's part of your consideration.
They obviously didn't have any property under contract.
I had I had lunch with him and at the time he said he was going to, he had no problem leasing it to Waste Management. So he changed his mind.
And I think there's more questions for other things that were brought forward too about their abilities or where they'll take things or how they'll do things. And for me, I had a problem with their proposal still. The the way they addressed the nine hundred and forty trucks on I five was we'll only do four during the day. The rest we're going to be doing at night. That doesn't stop the carbon emission stuff. That doesn't change anything with the emission problems that are going to happen with nine hundred and forty more trucks.
And do you read the letter out loud yesterday?
Portions.
Portions of it?
Because we only had three minutes.
Oh, God.
But yeah, but they heard us yesterday. Yeah, and we're very considerate. I'm thankful for that.
Did anybody see the the Skagit newspaper article that just came out?
No, I have not.
Yeah, it sounds pretty good.
I have to look. Good. So that was a good, good meeting.
Anything else?
No, that's all I can think of.
I don't have anything that I can think of unless we bring it up this afternoon.
Have we had any applications in for the Board of Adjustment position? Nobody applied. Okay, I had two that were tentative and I said, get the application. They obviously have not. So if anybody has, anybody.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to recess for the lunch hour.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to recess for lunch. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of recessing for lunch, say aye. Motion passes. We'll be back if you want to call.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the business agenda with the addition of added a section on outside council at one forty and then three, fourteen and sixteen from the agenda for the ten second end of votes. I gave further discretion on that. Hearing that, all those in favor of approval of this agenda will fill with stipulation, say aye.
Aye.
Three minutes. So that was just forward to some comments. Comment, it's now time for the public to vote for the commissioners. unmute yourself and then start your testimony. Please give your name and general location for the record. So in the room, is anybody in the room have a public comment or do you want to wait? So we will go online. Anybody online have public comments? If you do, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. Not seeing any yet. I'm going to tap on my, yep, mic's working. Everybody can hear us. If you have a citizen comment online, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. Still not seeing. I did, I will advise my seatmates that I got a phone call today from someone in my district about recycling. That they were concerned about recycling not being picked up a couple of years ago. And now when they take their recycling bags in and they drop off nine bags, Republic will only give them six bags in return. So I told them I don't know what's going on with that. They thought we paid for recycling. So I explained the landfill contract to them and they're going to call Republic and and get more answers to what their questions are. I do think I see Mr. Eldred has unmuted himself. If that's so, go ahead, sir. Give your name and general location for the record and fire away.
You're muted.
You're still muted, sir.
Domer Eldred, Goldendale, Washington. You hear me? Okay.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would, you know, apparently with what has gone on over this Carringer project and I really feel you guys surrendered your authority in May of twenty twenty one when you had overwhelming support to keep the moratorium in place. And you voted not to do that. And that that relinquished a lot of power back right back to the state and overrode anything in the county could do. And at that time, we had utilities and transportation, which was controlling EPSEC. And then when EPSEC became an independent agency in June of twenty twenty two, they 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 received more authority than they had under the utilities. When they were under the 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 offset of the utilities. But anyway, all that to say that you guys have relinquished your power and it's going to be the stakeholders in this county that are going to decide policy and what what this county is going to do. And the stakeholders happen to be the developers that have received the maximum amount of authority over this county due to the negligence of the commissioners not holding that moratorium in place back in May of twenty twenty one. So I really don't see at this point why any reason we should keep commissioners. We could either go to a county administrator or county manager to perform the duties because anything, you guys don't have any kind of power over whatever the state wants. You're just sitting there waiting for their next mandate to tell you guys directions to tell you guys what what's coming down the line. So anyway, I just think that we're we're could save a lot of money on salary and benefits if we just change the operation of the county because at this time, the commissioners are just, they don't have any authority over anything that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. Anybody in the room have citizen comment yet? Are we still waiting? Oh, we got one over here and then we'll we'll jump back online and then we'll come back over.
Hello, Abby Moco, Goldendale. I would just like to commend the commissioners on their support of the demolition derby that's coming up in Goldendale. Sounds like it's going to be a really big thing all day long and I think a lot of people are going to come into town and I think it's really good that you're supporting them as you are. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go back online. For anyone to have citizen comment online, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. I'm not seeing it. So we'll go back in the room. If you want, you can come forward and state your name and general location in the county for the record and then whatever you want to talk about.
Paul Letterer with Fisher Hill above Lyle. I spoke with you folks about water issues here a few weeks back. And I've been visiting with the assorted entities that I believe I need to speak with, all which are led to dead ends. I, since then, I have a spring that has gone dry and I also have discovered that the planning and zoning has approved or in the process of approving thirteen residential lots next door to us which all will in time want water for for some reason. And I want the county to instead of pushing it down a year down the road, this is what I'm told. It'll take a year before we start considering the situation. I'd like to expedite that and get something moving so that we can have some control over the water usage. That's it.
Thank you, sir. I'm taking notes. Unless we have questions, and I actually have one. I I do have a question. If you can come back to the microphone. So yes, if we if we're updating the comprehensive plan to change zoning or whatnot, that is going to take time and you're asking us to do it now. What do you, what exactly are you asking?
Well, before you even consider any zoning changes, my understanding is that you need to monitor the situation and have documentation and records. And I'm advocating and I'm told that you're expanding. And I'm advocating and I'm told that you're expanding all your resources over in the Troutdale area and that you don't have any funds or people available to do any monitoring or try, anybody to, available to establish records. And so what I want to do is get you guys rolling on the ball so that this doesn't happen ten years down the road, you know, I've got it, we've got another planned subdivision going in, in five, less than five years adjacent to us. But that's, you know, on their, their lot division, you know, they can do a subdivision of what I think it's four lots and then they can come back again and re-subdivide again and that's what their intentions are. You know, it, we, we just need to get a handle on, I currently, I personally have three dry cased wells, a dry spring, I have two contiguous neighbors who have, or three actually, three contiguous neighbors that have dry wells also.
Okay.
You know, we're out on a ridge in a, in a water limited resource, regeneration source. And so these additional thirteen lots next to me currently and then more down the road.
So clarification, your request is to get to monitoring now and not later so that when we actually make the decisions, we actually have the data.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Um, thank you for the audience to let me facilitate to make sure I knew what the gentleman was speaking of. We'll go back online, anybody online have citizen comment for the board of commissioners, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. I see Sherry, go ahead, Sherry.
Good afternoon, commissioners, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to kind of piggyback off what Dale was saying, I've been thinking a lot about, you know, how, how Kilkatack County can fight off this industrial solar steam rolling machine and their long-term plans they have for our county. And I remember back, few years back, Commissioner Sodder at the time said that our county is nothing but a franchise of a state. And I fear that that's the reality of the world we do live in. You are nothing but a franchise of a corporation told what to do. And our state, as you see, is pushing through tax credits and where do our tax credits come from, but the taxpayers, your taxpayers as well. So here we are with this government being ran by corporations, special favors coming in, telling our government what they're going to do, tax credits to get them going, our county gets revenue to do, push the agenda the state wants. And we saw how that happened during the pandemic, I see it happening now with mental health, everybody's got to have mental health, we've got to pay for people's mental health, it's kind of a scary agenda, if you really looked at it. But anyway, here we are in the schools pushing that agenda with the children with mental health, they're all mentally ill apparently. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is with EPSEC, I, I continue to say, who, who are they? Who gave them the authority to come into county, county land where a county collects the tax property, the property taxes? You're, you're told as a county, you have authority over the zoning of the lands in your county, you're told that and then all of a sudden the state's going to start appointing some people, paying them money, telling them what their position is, you know, and they're going to have authority to overrule our county's planning and our zoning. I, I question their authority and I think that our county should question their authority as well. I mean, unless this is the agenda you guys want to go down, you know, I hear you saying that you, you don't mind green energy and we've proven that the scary fact is it's a scam and every time we as a county approve another one of these scam projects, we, you know, you, you're, you're all wanting these tax monies and then we find out that they depreciate every year and as a favor to these foreign entities, you know, when do we get to treason? We're, we're literally funding for corporations to come in and destroy our land against our will. So what, what's the county's plan? What's your plan? Can, can you sue your parent corporation? I don't know. Can you tell your parent corporation, hey, you, you gave us some authority as a franchise and we're not going to let you step on us? But anyway, this has got way out of hand and I think we all see it, miles of black glass, it's not going to be pretty, it's too bad for the people, it's too bad this was brought on by sketchy deals at night, backdoor deals and, and Commissioner Anderson going house to house, asking landowners to lease, that's what I've been told anyway. Who do you work for, Commissioner Anderson? The people or the solar? Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comment. We'll go back in the room, if anybody has not spoken and would like to. I'm going to speak again, I, unless I have, we have another question. Um, so we'll go back online.
Hi, I'd like to have a public speech.
Go ahead.
Hi, Gabrielle Gilbert. I want to discuss the importance, and I know this summer this'll make it, I guess, on an agenda that you'd actually talk about increasing the youth centers budget to address the deficit. The youth center gave up more than three percent when you made across the board cuts during COVID. And what is funded with that is the snacks that the kids eat, the programs that they get and the fact that we are available for families when we live in basically a childcare desert. The youth center is right now at a, at a roster of over a hundred and nineteen students and every day they are made available Monday through Friday to have a place where these kids can hang out and enjoy their summer and really need the board to consider how you treat children in this county and how you value children in this county. And you do it by showing what you put your money where your mouth is and if you care about kids and you care about families, you need to start addressing, increasing the youth centers budget and stop making us nickel and dime every time for more money so that we can thwart children and families. Um, the other thing that I want to say is Jake Anderson is my representation and when people come after him, I take that really, really personally. I know that when you have elected officials, they will do things that you either agree with or don't agree with, but the smear campaigns that this community in the county takes against him, I find offensive and I will always speak up against that. If you have an issue with an elected official, it's one thing to come, but to make innuendos and discuss things that aren't true, I don't agree with and I will push back and clap back on that every single time. So Jake, I expect you to get that money for the youth center too, so do your best to get people to agree that you increase the youth center and care about students and care about kids. Thank you also to Commissioner Zoller for having a conversation about childcare, I greatly appreciate it and I'll reach out again because I spoke to State Representative Chris Corry and we discussed her at length, the childcare desert that exists in Kilkatack County and what needs to happen to address it because you cannot ignore it, that's the most important thing, stop ignoring the childcare desert in Kilkatack County. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it, bye.
Thank you. Uh, still in citizen comment, if anybody new in the room has citizen comment for us? I'm seeing none, let's go back online, anybody online that has not commented yet have citizen comment for us today? I'm seeing none. Roll through who's there. Many county employees. All right, we are still in citizen comment for a few more minutes, if anybody online has citizen comment, please unmute yourself or raise your hand and tell that we will just sign some paperwork. If I allow you a second comment, then each one of these people here gets a second comment too. So.
You asked, I didn't give him a second.
Well, that was the clarifying question, so if the board has a clarifying question of you, by all means, any of them can ask. Um, but other than that, then we have to let everybody that already partake, partake again, or they get a claim that I denied in their free speech and equal provisions under law and I really don't want to do that. Um, so I would say if there's something you didn't mention that you want to mention, bring it up next time or reach out to any of us offline after the meeting, email us, phone calls, um, whatever else, I have to just try to be fair to everybody, so hopefully you can understand. Um, still in citizen comment, we have a few minutes left, a few people walked in, if anybody has citizen comment that has not given citizen comment in the room and or online, now is the time to do so. That's actually. Take the rest. Last call for citizen comment, if anybody has citizen comment wants to make it either in the room or online, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. All right, hearing none, I will open it up to my seatmates.
Sure.
If they have any responses.
Yeah, I do. Um, Mr. Eldred, um, I agree, it's a very frustrating situation, very complicated. It's also a very slippery slope. I think we're in a season for a lot of things where the pendulum has swung so far one way and I do hope we're seeing it starting to track back the other way, at least hopefully somehow to get to middle ground again. And Kathy Mc, thank you, always, you're a little ray of sunshine in our room always every week and I, I look forward to seeing you here every week. And Mr. Letterer laughed. Jake, I was going to ask you about well monitoring, I know you've done that before. Uh, for my education, the well monitoring that we've done in the past, does that show up crucial areas that are lacking? Do we have any sort of record?
Not on that little.
Not over on that.
Finger up there. No, it's all over the county, but he is, is a very defined area.
He's in a bad spot anyhow, so yeah.
I, I was going to top, bring that up, but.
Okay.
If staff? Okay.
Oh, okay. Good, I'll move on till he comes back and Gabby, thank you, I always enjoy visiting with you. Um, I did run into Mylan Walling yesterday and he said there's some plans being made from the city and inviting you and we'll all get together again really soon. I agree, funding that to the, uh, after school center should be a no-brainer, especially since I attended the community night for opiate crisis with Gina Moss Brecker and the sheriff and it was heart wrenching, that was a very hard meeting to get through, the room was packed, everybody's interested, it's, um, everybody across the board is willing to get together to do something about what's happening. And the thing that really impacted me that just really upset me was a woman who spoke about going to the local park here in Goldendale and fending off drug dealers or trying to see to it that children weren't involved with the drug dealers at the park. Uh, and it's happening every day, she tries to walk her dog there and it's a very well-known problem. So my fear is if we don't keep up on these centers, if we don't expand these centers for that crucial age of after school, those moms will have no choice but to leave them at home, latchkey kids for two to three hours till they get home and they'll be on the street and they'll be victims. And we need to provide the social care that those children need to, to get them into the new future and hopefully we can get the rest of this under control so we have safe communities. Uh, but it's my vote to fund that. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, do you have anything?
Oh, yeah. Okay, um, I would ask staff, if we can try to get Mr. Letters' contact information, if we have it from an email, if you could search for it, um, I've got some ideas, um, of what we can do for him. Uh, and I'll start with Mr. Eldred, you're stating that we surrendered our authority back of May in 2021 to the state, that is incorrect. Uh, we were under a moratorium, the laws that the state is operating on, under EPSEC have been there long before we rescinded our moratorium, I will also remind you that we were under a moratorium when the current project was applied for and that we will find out very shortly what the results of that moratorium are, whether they're upheld or not to the state, but I would advise you to go look at the Capitol Press article from May twenty second that talks about it. Um, in terms of why should we be paying as county commissioners, we should hire a county administrator and we should all be fired. Uh, this county has not had a county, uh, we, this county has had a county administrator one time in the past that I remember and it didn't go well. The county administrators can only manage the executive branch of government, a county administrator, if you were to hire one today, would be roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, unweighted costs. Now, these three county commissioners that you see sitting up here are working commissioners, we are the executive as well as the legislative branch of government, we could at any time hire a county administrator to take over some of the duties, we would continue getting paid the same amount. I would say that you are getting the best bang for your buck that you ever will right now because we're one of the few counties that don't have an administrator to manage all those things. Uh, somebody who's actually, uh, represented to the public is actually managing all those executive functions. Ah, Ms. Moco, thank you so much for your positive comments, as always, it's always a ray of sunshine of my day. Uh, Ms. Bosque. While I, I understand where you feel and how you may feel, I will remind you though that in the state Supreme Court ruling of Taylor versus the Superior Court, that counties are but arms or agencies of the state organized to carry out or perform some functions of state government. Furthermore, they are instrumentalities of the state and they have no powers except those that are conferred by the constitution and state laws. That means that in essence, we are junior to the state, we can't take on anything that state RCW or the constitution does not give us. If the legislature decides to give EPSEC or a state agency some power and not give it to us, the state can do that, the legislature can do that. While we are the legislative branch of the locals, we are not the legislative branch of the state, the only things we can do is create codes that can further limit your rights from what the state already does if that's conferred to us. We cannot rescind state ordinances, we cannot rescind state laws, that's not how the process of government works. And with your statement that I am going around house to house getting to people to sign up for solar leases, I have heard a lot of tall tales in my time, I've heard a lot of hearsay, a lot of conspiracy theories and outright lies, but that has got to be one of the best ones I've heard this year. Thank you for the laugh, ma'am, that was, that was hilarious. But just for the record, I will say I have never asked anyone nor advised anyone to sign up for any solar, wind power or other green energy lease. And so, um, I would ask you in the future to at least check where you're getting your information from, otherwise you're just continuing to spout things that you know are just false on their face. Otherwise, you're just continuing to spout things that you know are just false on their face. And Miss Miss Gil, uh, Gabrielle, uh, thank you uh, for your support and um, and I, of course, will be voting to to refund the uh, youth center to the full twenty thousand dollars when that comes up um during our next um, uh supplemental budget. And with that, Commissioner Christopher, I will give you all the rest of the time.
One thirty, what rest of the time? Um, I almost started earlier just because we talked a lot lately. Um, so I'll try to go quick to Dell that we should get a county manager and have no commissioners. That would be a violation of the law. You are either a three commissioner board or you're a five commissioner board. Under the law, there is no law that allows you to have no commissioners. Somebody has to be accountable to the taxpayers. Uh, and luckily that is us. Uh, now I know you don't want to remember or have selective memory. I can somewhat agree with you that if we would have um, continued the moratorium in May of twenty twenty one, we could have sent it to the planning commission. The planning commission could have given a a recommendation just like they did, and we could be far ahead of the game farther than we are now. Could that have stopped it? Maybe maybe the Cypress would have applied then while it was in front of the planning commission. We don't know. It's only speculation. Uh, but again, we did not continue that moratorium because I was outvoted. I wanted to see change. My teammates did not want to see change. You cannot continue a moratorium if you're going to make no change. Um, so thankfully at this election, uh, elections have consequences, and the voters voted me a second vote to continue pushing for that motor turn. We didn't make it. We made changes. We made emergencies earning ordinances to to keep it from happening in the future. Uh, but again, elections have consequences. So next year I'll be up for election and the voters might throw me out of office and go right back to the way it was. And so that will be the people's decision next year. Um, Kathy Moko, yes, thank you. Um, about the demolition derby. That is wonderful. I am definitely going. I think it's a big thing for our local community, and I think provide a lot of tourism funds for our local businesses. So uh, hopefully it's a good turnout. Hopefully they use this opportunity this year to uh, raise enough money that they can continue to do it next year because I don't know that the county funds that went into it will be available next year. Um, so the point of it is is that they kind of the city and the county paid for it this year. You guys raised the funds, put them in the bank, make sure you got enough funds to do it again next year. Um, so that's kind of the game plan. Um, yeah, I would like to know more about Mr. Letterman's property on Fisher Hill that we're spending all the money in Trout Lake and can't put him on a well log, but we're kind of in some transition in that department. So um, hopefully as we get through transition, we'll have better. We as a board will have more oversight and um more knowledge of what's going on in each department uh, so we can hold them accountable. Um, Sherry, all I can say is thank you for your comments. Don't have a whole lot more to add to it that we haven't already added in the past. Uh, Gabby, same regard there and in the process of time, and we're already overtime. I'm gonna end citizen comment there and move on. Uh, one thirty is new business. IT manager Randy Christensen requests to apply for state and load of local cybersecurity grants, and it is one thirty three. We're a little late, but go ahead, sir.
Yep, like you said, I'm I'm here to get permission to apply for the um, the cybersecurity grant. It's put out by the Department of Homeland Security and it's administered by the state of Washington. Um, currently for the fiscal year twenty twenty two, which was when the money was initially released by the feds. Um, it was um, there is currently three point six million available. Um, of that eighty percent goes to local and tribal governments. Uh, twenty five, twenty five percent of that is earmarked for rural can rural governments that serve less than fifty thousand people. That's us. Okay, Washington State Legislature uh, has uh, at least for the twenty twenty two fiscal year has uh, has granted funds for the required cost share. For the future, future years, uh, the the Washington Military Department has asked for the same match. Well, actually for the next biennium, they've asked for the same match. Um, the project funding, so like I said, there's three point uh, six million for for currently uh, for the fiscal year twenty twenty three, there is seven million available for twenty twenty four. There's five point three million available. And in fiscal year twenty twenty five, there is one point seven million. Okay. Um, what I intend to do with the grant is so back in, I think it was uh, May, Curtis and I met with uh, with CISA, and CISA is is of course, like every every government agency is an acronym. It's a cybersecurity and infrastructure security agency. Um, it's a, it's a division of homeland security. Okay? And from that meeting, they developed uh, a cy- a cybersecurity performance goal specifically for Clicktack County. So what I intend to do is what I'd like to do with it, at least for this first year, is hire a consultant to come in and first off, write policies, um, cybersecurity specific to cybersecurity. Okay, and then from those policies, we would, I I would also ask them to develop a plan to implement uh, the policies, whatever whatever that might look like. At this point, I don't know. Um, and I would like, and I just, as a matter of fact, before I came to this meeting, I had a conversation with emergency manager. And uh, and the risk manager, and we've we've talked about how we can, you know, how we can can best use this. And so I want to involve them in this cybersecurity uh, process. Um, the the policies that I would want them to write would um, would would define the future state of where we want to be. The plan that I would ask them to write would be the process of getting there. Um, it's likely that in twenty twenty three, I would, I would require more money, so I would go out for additional funding. Since if I get approved this year, then in twenty twenty three, it should be easier because because they they've already approved me. So at that point, they would ask, you know, what have you done and what do you intend to do to can do to continue down this process? And twenty twenty four and twenty five too. Um, I have and I believe I have until twenty twenty seven going through this process to completely uh, fulfill all the obligations of the of the grant. So it's it's a multi-year thing. Um, this is the beginning. So um, that's that's about, that's about all I have to explain it. Uh, any further questions?
What is the um, grant match if any of these?
Right now, uh, the state of Washington is is uh, is is going to cover the the match for the twenty twenty two, and it's and it's been requested by the department or by the Washington Military Department to uh, to have the same match for the twenty twenty three fiscal year. Beyond that, I can't, I can't tell you.
So we haven't really talked about grant administration in your department yet. Um, how does that happen? Do you have someone in your staff that does your grant administration, or where does that happen for your department?
I think primarily it would happen with me.
Mm hmm.
Um, I think I would.
Lucky you.
Lucky me.
It's a big job.
We don't have any other bands. No, no, this is this is new territory.
Oh, be careful what you wish for.
Yo, I know. Trust me.
I'm sure you've done them before.
Yes. And I would, I would lean on uh, I would ask Jennifer for some, for some input on how to do that. I I don't operate in a vacuum.
No, I'm sure you'll do fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, you sold me at no match.
Okay.
And when they come forward and say that, well, Washington State's not matching anymore. I need twenty grand to do next year, so we're gonna have a conversation.
Yep.
I don't ask.
So plan, plan for that one.
Yeah.
Uh, and plan accordingly. Uh, but other than that, yeah, as long as they're footing the bill, we can always use a little more protection.
Yep. Run.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. All right. Um, one forty, we have unfinished business. Um, which I believe Commissioner Anderson added outside counsel to. So your topic, sir, go ahead.
I make sure everyone has had a chance to read, read the PA opinion request and what direction would you like to go from here?
Do you want to start?
Nope, go right ahead.
I figured she would. Um, I did read it. I think the key takeaway out of it is that he is denying the request, but I believe that is the key takeaway I took out of it is denying the quest because he believes it was too open or generic in nature and too encumbersome and which brings me to the, okay. Um, I would. Um, he's not saying he would deny it period. He's just denying it because it's too open and encumbers or encumbers too many things, and he's not willing to do that. Well, I suggest we rewrite it and make it very specific in nature. Um, of which, you know, we didn't get that until noon, so I've had a little tiny piece of lunch, but um, uh, I've been working on that, and hopefully at some point today, if there's a second vote for it, I suggest we uh, turn in a new one that is definitely more tight, definitely more restrained. Um, and that not only asking for outside counsel that we're we are requesting counsel, whether that's him or he appoints somebody else to do these specific things. Um, so that that way it's not open and generic. That would be my opinion going forward.
And I could agree with that. Um, I'm seeing, you know, it's stated in the letter that he is our counsel and he is available. Uh, I'm trying to find this specific language that he quoted. That he's able and willing. Um, so if there needs to be some ratcheting down of the language to be more specific of what we're looking for and then have his consideration, I would support that.
Is he he mentions, I'll add in the letter that he mentions that each instance where we've had outside counsel has been narrow, narrow and uh, articulated purposes are related to specific. Um, well, yes, and our ask is provide oversight and assistance, which is broad. Um, so let's get down to exactly what are we requesting? Uh, and then make a formal request. That would be my opinion. But again, I didn't get a work on all of it. I know there's at least one more sentence I have to put at the bottom of my draft.
So it says here that the attorney's office is able and willing to provide legal assistance and will seek additional outside counsel when we determine it is necessary. To me, that says we need to always ask the question of the counsel of our counsel, who we're required to, who's duly elected, that the citizens pay. And then only he will determine whether we need outside counsel. Direction. Is that the direction you would like to go? Because I'm hearing it kind of both ways. We want to, are we asking him for outside legal counsel? Or are we asking him? We need counsel with regards to X, Y, and Z. Your job is to give it to us as best you can.
I've already said in my letter that we are requesting him and or outside counsel.
Okay. And you've got a list.
If if he feels he's a land use expert and has the ability to do so, I'm not gonna stop him from doing it. I just would like it done by somebody.
And.
Um, somebody needs to be partaking in these FSEC meetings where they're making decisions without all the evidence. Somebody has to be partaking. So when they see a parliamentary issue, they can have an objection. Uh, if they need to um, file an injunction because the way they've seen something is out of line with state law and the powers given to FSEC, they actually have to be paying attention to the process. They have to be there. They have to be at the meeting. They have to be partaking. Um, if we're just waiting for to just sit by and wait for FSEC to make a decision and then we take the prosecutor's advice on whether we appeal the decision or not, that's one way to go. Uh, but I think we have to actually partake in the FSEC. When we go to a consistency hearing, that's a hearing in front of lawyers, we actually need to ask our lawyer to actually attend that. And I wouldn't think we'd have to ask, but at this point, I'm asking.
And and that has been a hard point for me since I began in this position was what is that relationship? It's always been very foggy. I'm thankful for this document because it does, or his letter, because it does define. No more assumptions, no more assuming on either end, which I had wanted him to come in with us, but uh, we chose not to have him come in and sit down and define that relationship. This does define it. We have a PA request form. It will go back to him, and what's legal and correct is he answers us back in writing, and that worked for me on this document, and that's what it looks like he's wanting to go forward in the future. Because just like with Mr. Christopher, when we had a FSEC hearing, I would have just assumed, and now I don't have to do that. I know I have to stay on my guard and on my due diligence and say, hey, this is coming up. What do you think of this? Um, what's your opinion on this? And so um, that's how I see our relationship going forward, which really works for me. I appreciate that relationship that I'll ask him in a polite manner on writing, and he will answer back to me in writing. And then we can go from there wherever we are in that situation with what comes back.
Great. I hope everything goes forward, and I look forward to seeing what Commissioner Christopher comes up with for his questions. And hopefully that goes to the B O C C email, and we get to see that.
Well, no, my my point is I don't want to continue kicking this can down the road for another five weeks while FSEC makes their determination, why we just sit on the sidelines. I would like to have this new opinion request, either approved or denied by this board today to be sent over today. So that we're not just waiting for FSEC to make their decision. Uh, if they ruled by a voice vote that it's consistent, even though they don't have half the documents, because Carriage pulled them back, I can't understand for the life of me how we can't object uh, or how we can't file an injunction until a judge gets to decide whether they can do that. Uh, but I'm not a lawyer, so it isn't me that's doing it. We have to request an attorney to be present uh, and actually do those things if those things are justified and or inform us on each step of the way so that we can make the policy decision on whether we want to appeal or we want to file an objection. Um, and then if there's somewhere in RCW that he gets to decide whether we appeal, then show me the RCW. Uh, no, I want to be very specific on what we need an attorney for for the FSEC process and then see if he accepts declines or provides outside.
So is your thought to finish our regular business and then recess while you work on your reading?
I need five minutes to finish my sentence, and then you guys can see it and pick it to pieces. So at some point today, I would like five minutes for recess, and then
Sounds great.
I can give my last train of thought in there and.
Well, we don't have a whole lot left for the agenda. There's even the stuff we have pulled, but.
Um, so if we're moving on, it looks like the resolution for the uh, six a denim of landfill was pulled because the resolution is not ready yet. So that will not be discussed today.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with thirteen items, noting that item number six, item number fourteen and item number sixteen. Have been fold, hold for further discussion today.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent with thirteen items, pulling the three. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all this approval, all this. All this in favor of approval of the consent agenda with thirteen items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, how do you wanna do these? Do you wanna discuss them and vote on them individually? Or do you wanna just have a generic discussion and then decide whether they're all being grouped up?
I do.
Or all, yeah, I would agree. Because I think we need to vote individually. Um, with that, I would entertain a motion on item number six.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve item number six, the Benjen waterline.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? And that would be me. Um, I cannot vote in favor of this. I believe it's in violation of the case to be to bylaws. And I believe it's in violation of the bylaws of the public corporation of this board. Um, with that, I will be voting no.
Do you wanna explain why?
I've already explained it many times, case P to me. I don't believe the dollars are being spent in accordance with the bylaws of either of those documents.
So investing in public infrastructure is not according to the bylaws?
We'd like to have a giant debate all over again about the bylaws serving poor and impoverished area where we look at property values and property rates. Uh, in unemployment rates and all those things, so that you're focusing on the bylaws that are. Pointed to blighted areas, and if that is the argument that Benjen is a blighted area. Um, and a water line in front of the Dicky property is a blighted area. Um, and that it's porn impoverished there, then you can have that opinion. I don't have that opinion, so I'm gonna be a no.
So sitting in on that meeting, uh, when they presented the project for the workforce housing that that's going to and the idea. Of what I see in Benjen already for housing and the need, uh, there, I would be a yes on that.
And I, I would. I told myself I wasn't gonna debate, but just for clarification, if this was the water line to the housing project. And it's an affordable housing project, might qualify. The water line of the housing project is going a completely different way and has nothing to do with this water line, so this water line has nothing to do with housing project.
Maybe my memory doesn't serve me well any longer, but I believe that Benjen's application pointed out. That this is going to the housing project and is going across state, will route one forty-one for the housing project to get there on the. South side of the housing project. Is that what you recall?
It is, and we convoluted that whole thing, talking about the water line that was on the backside. And but that, that water line is there and serves other things, but it doesn't have to do with this request or where this water was going.
Wow. Well, I would recommend you both look at the housing application turned in by the applicants that actually turned the housing application in, because there's no mention to them. Other than the developer of this water line, requesting a water line, needing a water line. They are always running it off the north side of the property and their application says the north side of the property. So if Benjen threw affordable housing on their application to try to get a sale. Maybe they did, but the actual application, if you read it in the packet, has nothing to do with this one.
Is that in the Benjen City's application packet or in what application packet are you talking about?
It was in our case of Peter packet as well. They even testified that the water line was coming from there, but they're hoping that maybe they can use it for this and then. There was no guarantee that it's going over to this housing project. That was a sales pitch to try to get them to approve a water line in front of a property that doesn't need a water line. So again, your job to either vote yes or no based off the information you have and where you feel good. I don't look at this as serving a blighted area or helping the poor and impoverished. That is a dead end water line. They just extends a water line across the road and out in front of a vacant parcel that's owned by Dicky. And does not go up and connect. To the apartment complex. Um, it's, you know.
Well, I think what it did was make it available for the connections and that would be on the developer to take it from that source. Um, and like I said, there was no mention of that. Other main that comes down from White Salmon and it's serving other things and we were the ones that brought that up, that it was there. And someone in the room qualified that, yeah, there is a water line there, but there was no discussion that that was serving that.
I cannot vote for it because I don't believe it fits the bl- the blighted area or the porn impoverished. I personally really, really, really want you both to vote for it. Because then every single Goldendale water line in the community with fifty-two percent poverty will be on your case P to board a packet for approval. So anyway, any further discussion before we have a vote? And I did the thing, I just, I told myself I wasn't gonna debate, I'm just gonna throw my vote out there and be done with it, but. Um, any further debate? Nope. Alright, then we'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of item number six, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. I'm a nay, two to one, motion passes, item number six passes. Next up, item number fourteen, IT. This was your poll, Mr. Anderson, so go ahead with your presentation.
Yeah, the reason I asked, uh, for this to be polled is it was in our packet, was the first time I saw the, the overall contract. And I had a meeting with Randy this morning because I had questions with regards, um, to, uh, the way the contract was written. And the things that were not included that are going to be billed at the full rate of, you know, averaging two hundred dollars an hour. And I was asking Randy to go back and, uh, check with them and see if we can get, uh, more clarity and things that, uh, that look like. Uh, anything that they have to. Um, any updates to any of the software or upgrades, they're going to charge us time, but yet they're charging us this thirty thousand dollars upfront. And my thought was that should all be included. Um, and so I was asking for this to be held over two weeks while Randy gets the answers to all my questions.
Um, okay, does that conclude your discussions, sir?
Yeah, unless you have questions.
My opinion is to pass the item today and I would vote yes for it today. Um, so I guess it's to Miss Solar.
Um, I'd like to have more clarity if you could bring it back in two weeks, that'd be great.
Okay, good one. Item number fourteen is polled. Um, stays polled. And bring in more clarity to whatever questions they have, please, and make sure you present those questions. And, uh, I know he's talking, so I'm, I'm making sure he's hearing me. Make sure whatever questions they had, you share with all three of us. And whatever clarity you give, you share with all three of us, please. Um, with that, we're moving off to item number sixteen, which is, uh, the fee waiver request. That a bait of Goldendale chapter has, uh, for rental of the county commissioner or the. Pet County Fairgrounds for the Fourth of July demolition derby. Essentially, they have asked for a waiver of the fees, which I believe is twelve hundred bucks, but I could be wrong. Um, and, um, believe Commissioner Anderson, you pulled that one, so go ahead and start us off on that.
I'm scrolling down. And it was two thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars is the estimated to be received, which I believe is for the entire fairgrounds. Uh, my question is, is are they planning to use all of the fairgrounds? And if so, cause usually we split it up by areas in the fairgrounds. And what are they doing with the whole fairgrounds? I haven't seen, I, I know this has been your, your pet, your baby and you've.
Um, well, it isn't necessarily my pet and my baby, but I've been working very closely with them since the very start of the idea a year ago. Um, I don't honestly know why they're asking for the whole thing, other than they didn't want to have to try to facilitate. You know, some kid having a birthday party in another building at the same time they're having a demolition derby. So they wanted, they're not using like the Joan Fry Arena, but they're just trying to rent the whole space, so they don't have to have any. Competition or venue at the same time, and I, I don't quite understand it, it's not my baby. Um, so yes, if they were only renting the space they technically need, it'd be twelve hundred bucks. Uh, but since they're trying to rent the whole building to, or, or the whole facility and all the buildings, even the ones they're not even gonna be in. Um, it did bring the price up to two thousand. That's, that's all I know on that.
And have we ever, um, waived fees where there's an entrance fee to get in?
Um, don't know.
We had this conversation a few months ago, I remember, and I thought we came to resolve that it would be for nonprofits or somebody not making.
Um, well, Abate is a nonprofit. And I guess I would argue that this is a, this is not a whole lot different than the actual county fair. You have five hundred to a thousand to three thousand people at this event, half of them children. Um, and. I, I pretty much heard earlier that two of you wanna throw three thousand dollars at a. Hundred and nineteen children, so that we don't have to charge them tuition of two dollars per month. But yet five hundred kids. I would also add that the purpose of this is it's our money anyway, really. We gave them eighteen thousand dollars of tourism funds. We can either take back two thousand dollars of that eighteen thousand. Or we can allow them to continue to hold on to that and use it in another way, so that then they can fundraise during this event, which is why they're charging admission. So that they can fund this project next year without asking us for another eighteen thousand dollars. So depending on how that goes, or if they've gotta pay the county two thousand dollars to use the building, they're gonna then just ask for it next year back again anyway. So really, it's our money, whether we wanna put it in the left pocket or the right pocket. Uh, it came out of one to go and the other, so I, I.
So devil's advocate, how many other things do we have at the fairground that we're gonna get the same answer or same question?
Um, that are this big type of project, this is it, other than.
No, it doesn't matter how big, how small, they're going to justify, well, you did it for one, are you gonna do it for everything?
Um, I, I guess I could say they can always try because you have the rodeo Bible camp that does. Some part of an in-kind service. Uh, but I, I've, you know, it's up to the discretion of this board. I have always chose to not charge fees for children. Um, I was not. Um, in the majority of that discussion, um, that vote went against me. Um, and it would be my choice to not charge fees for the rodeo Bible camp either. Uh, if an adult group wants to go have an event or a barrel race or whatever, that's fine. Um, I believe we should charge the fees. Uh, but I do not believe we should be charging fees to a children's group. Uh, and or making them paint the bleachers or go pull weeds or spend two and a half days doing manual labor around the building to save a thousand. Um, that's my opinion. This board can change its policy on that. Or it can uphold and not agree to this either, that's choice. Uh, it's a new board, it's a new policy. Unfortunately, ma'am, it is not time for service comment. Although I think I would love to hear it, uh, but I will hold off. And, and we have not had that discussion as this board, because boards change and votes change as people get elected. Um, and that's probably a discussion we need to have, and yes, technically, whatever you do on this. Could set precedent going forward with other groups. Uh, my precedent has always been the same, and I think it should have been way for children in this Fourth of July demolition derby is. Um, I can look at it as far more of a children's event. Um, than anything else. Uh, and for the good and the betterment of a community that. Needs it.
Well, and if we don't have a written policy, I think we should develop ones. We don't face this again, this question. Cause I remember this debate earlier and like you said, it was probably the other board and I was just sitting in, but we've had this discussion before. Of as far as the, um. Tax lodging funds that go out for these, I think I was fairly clear at that, that we have returning people that ask for that. And I, I hope, I believe their intent is, and I've heard it from them with this demolition derby, that they will become self-supporting. And that's what I'd like to see with the tax money that goes out, the lodging advisory board, that we don't just keep. Come on back and take your money. Every year I'd like to see people come self-supporting if they can, like the rodeos and stuff. Start selling billboards, whatever you gotta do to make up for that small amount we give you out of our tax lodging. That way we can facilitate a new event coming in and we can start building the community.
I agree, make it more of a, less of a welfare pot of money and more of a hand up part of money. Hey, let's start you out, get you going, and now you need to take care of yourself. Abate is working on that, they're selling raffle tickets to a car that's over by Perez Auto. That I've actually heard they've sold seventeen thousand dollars of the tickets to. Uh, but this event is going to cost anywhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars every year to hold the demolition derby and the, uh, the fireworks show, so.
And I can understand the exchange of money, money in, money out.
Right.
Like in kind, and if that's going to help them make it through their first year, so they can be self-supporting, I can understand that. But again, even if we say yes, I wanna make sure that we establish a policy for what our rental policies are for that facility. On record.
A policy and a criteria? So that would probably, yeah, cause in that pol- yeah, okay. Saying that policy would, cause we always get waivers, it's even like the rodeo club has to come forward with a waiver. I stood in the audience to the previous board one year arguing on behalf of their waiver, so I'm, I'm well aware of it.
Mister Anderson?
I'm really glad that, you know, Abate is a nonprofit. And, and so I'm trying to think about this logically. We had a Keen's air come forward and they're going to pay to use it. That's a private event. Um, this is a, oh, huh?
Who are they?
Birthday party.
That's a fifteenth birthday party, that's a private event. I don't know if I necessarily agree that, that we're going to give, block the whole place open. And just so that they can have nobody else, like a Keen's air or something else going on and, and somewhere else. If you're asking for it for free, you should only be getting it for free for the areas that you're actually using. And if you want to pay to block off everything, go ahead, but there might be a family reunion or somebody else who wants to use it. They can use it and the Fourth of July is a very busy day, maybe it's a big family gathering, who knows? But saying we're gonna, we're gonna take the whole thing and we want it for free, hmm, that one doesn't sit exactly well with me. I'm of course in favor of the demolition derby and giving a hand up to them. And helping them through the process so that they can hopefully do it again next year. Um, I just, I'm just trying to understand why they need the whole thing. Also, I, I would love to know how much the county estimate of what we're going to be spending of county tax dollars to clean this up. Of what, you know, buildings and maintenance and grounds are gonna spend, uh, on this event. It would be really great to see what our actual costs are, because if we're providing it for free, but then we're also spending. Ten plus thousand dollars of county staff time, you know, to clean it up, I just want to know it. I'm willing to do it because I wanna see this great thing for the community. I just want to have the answers and the knowledge of what it actually costs. Because I keep looking at the fairgrounds and, and I look at our budget and how much money we spend on the fairgrounds every year. And versus how much money we're bringing in, and that's an asset that we're continuing to dump money into. I wanna see more use of the fairgrounds and more people renting it and actually making some money to help pay it down a little bit.
Well, and last week, yeah, I believe it was just last week, we asked, what was the determination? How much of the fairgrounds did they need? And they weren't able to answer that question. Um, staff who presented that said they'd get back to us, uh, and then the next thing is the whole thing. And then the ask for relief. So was that just kind of a quick answer of, I don't know, uh, we just can't estimate, so let's just do the whole thing. And.
Well, I think there was, um. I think there was some discussion between the group and Public Works, but then again, Public Works was gonna get back and I don't know that they ever got back.
It never came back.
Um, with that, I can totally understand Commissioner Anderson's, I mean, technically, why are we waiving two thousand dollars when it should only be twelve? Cause that's all you're using. Um, so I would have, um, no heartburn over. approving this request with the condition that they release interest in any of the other areas of the fairgrounds. And put that as a question, a condition of approval of this. So that way it allows other areas to be used.
I'm trying to understand why the full use of the grounds of the first day is fourteen sixty and the full use of the grounds on the second day is seven thirty-five. Do we have any idea why that? Oh, it's half day. Seth, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Oh, there you are.
Hi.
Do you have anything to add to this discussion?
I have actually not been part of this this, uh, application, so I don't know too many details on it. Though I do know that we do have a policy in place that says when something can be waived at our fairground facilities. Um, was just recently signed by this board. And I don't know how that reads and what they submitted, but it was ordinance number zero, zero, two, oh, seven, two, three, that set up the waivers for our county facilities.
So the, the kicker is they only have so much money to spend this year because they're spending essentially that money that they haven't been fundraising, they're fundraising for next year, so they have this money. They need to know whether they're spending this money and paying the county or whether they're not spending this money. And they can spend that on advertising or concessions or whatever they're doing. They need an answer on whether they're paying us this money or not. If they are, whatever, they at least need to know it.
Do we know how much money?
So not to kick it down. Whatever they've raised goes to next year's. Whatever they're raising this year goes to next year's funding, not this year's. So even tickets or admissions or concessions or vendors or whatever else is going in the fund to buy the fireworks and whatnot for next year's Fourth of July festival. Not this year's.
Really? So they, they, they raised enough money that they've already paid for this year?
This year is funded by the donation from the county's uh, tourism fund and the, uh, city's donation to the tourism fund.
Do we know how many, this is off topic. Do we know how many cars have entered?
I do not. I almost sponsored one the other day and it was a little late to answer it. So it's got a different sponsor than me, unfortunately. You got a little bugger's gonna win. So if history wants to remind us, the J C's used to have a diva. They couldn't make it pencil. So it stopped happening. Abate with the generous donations of the city and the county to get them going the first year really, really looks like they're gonna be able to take it across the finish line and raise enough money um, to be able to make this a yearly event if they continue to get support from local businesses and even if it's just next year, they're not asking us for eight thousand, but hey, can you waive those fees again? So that we can continue to put this event on. I, I would honestly say that I believe this event will be the biggest event in the area other than the fair. Uh, for this community all year long. I think it's not big of an event. I think that many people are excited about going. With that, I'm, I'm in favor of waiving it, whether we waive the whole thing or put it with a stipulation that they have to give up whatever areas of the fairgrounds they're not gonna.
Well, I don't think it really matters this year, as I don't think anybody's gonna book the rest of the fairgrounds the day of. Uh, the July fourth, I think most people would have figured that out ahead of time. And I'm.
I know they did have one risk that since they're doing fireworks, that they would allow somebody else to run out the building. And then somebody's lighting up fireworks and stuff that they're gonna get blamed for it. That they're part of the demolition derby and they're gonna get responsible for some birthday party and some kid playing with fireworks. That was one of the comments. So they didn't want the liability for somebody else doing something and them getting blamed for it.
Oh, they didn't want to be hit blamed for it.
For some other group that rented a different piece that they didn't even a part of. So that was part of one of the arguments I heard.
Got it.
With that, I would be fine with approving it this year cuz it's sure notice and nobody's gonna rent the other part of it, and then working better with this group to make sure that next year they only ask for the section of the fairgrounds they're actually gonna use.
I, I would just ask, um, that we make sure that we direct, uh, Public Works Building and Ground to keep track of all their time and costs. Uh, so that we can associate that with the event and we can get a true representation of how much it costs the county taxpayers on top of it, because buildings and grounds come straight out of Texas. Anybody wanna make a motion?
You want to, you can if not.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the request for the waiver of the fee for the rental of fairground for the demolition derby on the.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to, uh, in the long word approved consensus agenda, item number sixteen.
I'm gonna be sure I got it.
Any further discussion? Do you wanna make a note in there that hopefully Public Works is listening or one of us remembers to try to have them document? I mean, one of us might know one of them pretty close, so maybe they can pass that along. With that, all this in favor of approving consensus agenda number, item number sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Wanna find out what, uh, Sussers in here for?
Yeah, that would be good. She was hiding, so. Well, feel free, your time is valuable, so just come on in and do your thing and don't have any comments for us before you go?
Thank you.
So during this time, um, our staff passed us the memorandum of understanding for the city of Bingen, and it did say that it was an extension of an eight inch water main along the north side of SR fourteen to uh, for greater water access for that area and that it was for advancing economic prosperity within the Clickyatt County Ten Year Economic Development Strategic Plan. So it was a coordinated effort. It wasn't just.
And that project is identified in our plan.
Yes, and I would have no doubt that Bingen is an impoverished town, although you connect it to yeah, you can't connect it. They're separate from the town of White Salmon.
Well, I understand, but they have their own census data and their own median household incomes and
Yeah.
Yeah, no, interesting. Well, we will have this discussion probably in the September case Pita meeting since they can't get the information for me in enough time to have a presentation in July case. And then we will go from there.
Uh, since who can't get you the information?
Um, economic development. I've been asking for numbers for, I don't know, two and a half years, haven't got them, so now they're actually starting to provide me with some numbers, but it takes time. Oh, see, and then you handed that to me and I signed it on.
I hope you wrote no.
He had to go back and do it.
You gave me such a hard time for writing. And now you do it.
Um, I would have rather just scratched it, but. No, and I would advise the board, if they don't like the terminology used in those documents. The, the board rules for the case Pita, the, the the documents that are used to create the public corporation and you don't like the terminology and you don't wanna spend the money on those projects. You can always change the rules. But if the rules are there, we need to either obey them or change them.
Or define them a little better.
Huh?
Define them a little better, maybe.
Whatever that so chooses, so cuz it was kind of like, uh, Mayor White Salmon says, oh no, by state law, you can spend it on things like this. I don't disagree. But by the rules the board was created in, they have to follow these rules. Not the state rules, or we change these rules. Uh, those are the choices. The previous board wanted that money to be spent in blighted areas of which I would argue none of it does, none of it has, none of it is.
Well, and I'll have to argue because I've seen that over the years be expended in its communities like Bingen that have been able to transform. And they're on the, the crux of transforming into being self-sustaining and moving forward into a great future rather than just dying like they were doing in the past.
My golden.
Um, where are we at?
Enough debate there.
Are we at payment approvals?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
Okay, Mister Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents, the date ending June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
I will second that motion.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. You need a discussion on paying the bills other than the freezer and the case of water. Um, it got cleared up earlier. Thank you for Public Works for clearing up our questions. Um, hearing none, all those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passes. Off to miscellaneous reports or board pending. So again, it's still my hope that the board allows uh, me a few minutes to finish whatever the last line was of the updated opinion request if the board so chose to entertain it, to submit it. I would appreciate if they so choose to hold it over till next week. That's their vote.
Would you like a fifteen minute recess?
I, I don't need it, any five, maybe. Me, maybe give me seven, make it till two thirty and be done.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to recess the meeting until two thirty.
I'll second.
Motion is second to recess till thir- two thirty. Any discussion? I mean, none, we are recessed till two thirty. I guess technically we could have just opened and.
Now, now they can press the.
Then you guys could have chatted about anything while I was doing it. Now we can't. All right, we will call our afternoon meeting, Clickyatt County Board of Commissioners back in session. Um, so I have a quick draft here. It states uh, as it seems we were denied outside counsel because our request was too open or generic in nature, we will raise the question specifically. Uh, we are requesting counsel hyphen you if you feel you're a land use expert. Uh, or allow us the ability to hire outside counsel if you feel you are not on hyphen to partake in FSEC meetings on behalf of the county and you hyphen or outside counsel on hyphen to argue the county's legal case and make presentations uh, and argue on behalf of the county. Uh, we are also requesting legal counsel participate in all FSEC general meetings. Sorry, and or site-specific meetings that may deal with projects located inside Clickyatt County, so that council can be aware and file any objections, injunctions, or appeals that may arise during the process. There are issues we believe can be challenged now, like FSEC not following state law and not making decisions or and or making decisions without receiving all the evidence before making them. Um, and that's kinda where I died. That last sentence kinda goes off in nowhere. Open the yes, no's, or edits. Uh, but that at least makes it specific that I believe counsel needs to be present. So if they see FSEC going off the rails with under state law, that they're supposed to have a public hearing in sixty days and it's ninety that they can object. Uh, if they feel that FSEC's making a decision without even receiving the documents from Caranger Solar, they at least can see that and make any kind of objections uh, or whatnot on the record that would then better serve us uh, in legal standing in my non-legal opinion. Uh, if there was any appeal, I kinda feel like if you're not gonna fight anything beforehand, how do you fight it during the appeal? Um, I'm again, not a lawyer, but I believe if you don't argue that you didn't murder somebody, you really don't have a chance to appeal that you didn't murder somebody. Uh, and we're not arguing anything now, which kinda tells me we're gonna have nothing to appeal on because we were already speaking of. But why do I know I'm not a lawyer and I don't get legal advice?
I have a difference with asking those questions right now because I think we need to clarify. And I'll say our positions, and I know we're not all on the same board with this, about FSEC process, FSEC dealings, FSEC meetings. And how two commissioners here at least feel there's some big problems and there's some legal problems and there's some slights and there's things that are be left undone versus potentially what our prosecutor sees or feels. Because if we are at odds in what we see as a board or what we see as individual commissioners with our questions and continuing and continuing and continuing down this path, and his stated position is FSEC is enabled by state law, there's no, don't challenge us, don't bomb. We need to know that upfront. Because it's a fruitless quest if he is across the chasm from us for representation. And he feels we're just not getting it, and we feel he's not representing us. So wouldn't it be more prudent to ask a question? Do you support the board of, possibly support the board of county commissioners in legal representation for items that arise out of the FSEC efforts and FSEC authority?
I don't know what the answer to the question would get you.
Um, because if he says, you're just wrong, the, the, the laws say this. Then we're throwing things out there. You're just gonna come back, no, because that isn't what he reads as legal. We're challenging things that he does not. Does that make sense to you, Jake, that he sees?
So, so you're, your, your goal, are you, what you're saying is, is that we can ask our counsel, is this lawful? Like, for example, we're gonna use, for example, the consistency here. And the applicant put forward, you know, information on the consistency hearing, FSEC's going to make a ruling on that consistency hearing. And you're stating that, and you've testified that you don't feel that it's consistent. And, and so this is, this is and so what are you saying that you would like him to testify that it's not consistent if he does not agree with that?
No, not, not even down to that point. I think we need a beginning ground level from when we began through this process, and we have had verbal communications that say, well, I don't know why you're asking that because the law says, and this is what I'm telling you. FSEC has the right to go through this process this way, and you have no I feel like this is just a fruitless effort of back and forth and frustration for him if we kept what he feels nitpicking possibly. Um, I would like him to state his position. And I would like him to state his position with the county commissioners, how he sees the FSEC authority and where that application was laid down and how does he see that as that is a done deal? And there's no reason for Clickyatt County to challenge them because he would not be successful at that. And right now, we need to start telling our constituents, the county is not going to make a move to protect you because prosecutor believes this is the law and this is where it stands. Because if we can't get past that, that there is a question there that um, he has not made his determination of where we're at and has given advice on that and is gonna stand by that in writing. In writing, then. I don't feel that asking him any further questions about anything they do is going to go anywhere but just back and forth and time's going to go.
So is your question, does FSEC have the authority to process this application?
It'd be broader than that because um, it's, it's not only the processing, the application, it's the way they're processing, the way they're. Holding their meetings, the way they're moving through their processes. Many, many times there have been times where, you know, a special meeting's been called, but yet it's still their regular monthly meeting. Uh, so they changed the terms so they can do it quicker. And there's just a little twist of the knife and a little change in the curtain. So we just keep moving at a fast pace. And um. I know Mr. McCanell has been following those, so I want to know if he sees that they have. State law on their side to lay that application down and we have no challenge there. And moving through the processes to date, is there anything there that he would advise? That he would challenge? Because if there's not, we're asking questions that are. We're interpreting law to the way we want to see it, or we're just handing him things he has to continually tell us, no. This is still going to continue on in the same process we're on. We have to know we're all on the same page. How do we get on the same page? And he is our legal counsel, so I would like to put in writing to hear from him. That he has nothing he can do to represent us at the FSEC board, rather than keep throwing things at him and, and frustrating him. Or having him say that they're not clear enough for him to understand.
I, I would love that document. I just don't think you're going to see that document.
That you can't speculate.
That document is not a legal opinion, so I don't think.
Well, that you can't speculate. Our relationship is. Respect and send him on the PA form he requests. His relationship is. As our counsel, he answers us in legal terms that we can use, and that means in writing.
I'm getting it correct.
And he's done it this time, so I want to give him the next time.
If I need counsel to actually go to the FSEC meetings.
Correct.
And actually pay attention. And fight on the county's behalf. It sounds like I need to write him a letter and request that he does that because he's never been requested to do that in, in his letter. So if we never get there, we never get anybody to even look at the meeting. Um, do I, would I love to see your document? Yes, but I think we need to either piggyback something else because right now, if we try to go to Superior, he's going to claim, oh, yeah, but they. They asked for these things that were just way too open and way too broad and, and you know, you might have a point.
Well, and if you need answers to a question.
We need to make specific and say, we would like you to actually do this, 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 or provide us with somebody who can. Um, then we're not open and.
And I'm fine with that. I'd like to submit your questions and I'm, I'm fine with that. I'd like to review them and see if I have any more to add or. A suggestion, but I'd also like to ask for, I guess what I'm saying is a PA opinion on the FSEC situation.
I, if you think you're going to get one, I'm.
So there's, I see this as two very different things. Number one is a PA opinion request. On whether or not FSEC has followed state statute with regards to the Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, with regards to the Caranger project. And he can look and see if the special meeting legal or not, and then that can lay that to bed. Right? That would lay that to bed for you.
Potentially, if you had a look at their process for the whole meeting. Uh, it's still only one person's opinion, but I would like to see it.
It, it's not one person's opinion. It is the legal counsel for the county's.
Backing up.
We only have one legal counsel.
This technically, we also, we also have.
This is about. This isn't about us. It's about us representing our constituents and their rights. And. This is an assault on private property. This is an assault. That will end up in a taking. I have no doubt it will come. It's came in other forms over the transmission lines already out there. When the solar comes, it will be a takings issue. This is. About. Are we going to stand as Clickitack County and question and push forward? For yes, and RCW was let out by the governor. But are we going to stand as Clickitack County and not challenge that? For our people and not question that and say, but wait a minute here. You have a letter from Department of Commerce that says, excuse me, you're interrupting every land use planning ordinance we've ever gave these people to create. We're, we're bypassing all the processes for ESA. Smoothing them over, saying, we don't, we don't have to look at endangered species act because we've said so now. And everything that we've stood for and had to do painfully for thirty years. Held down from the state and from the federal government. Now we're saying, doesn't matter, wrote something else, and now we're going to do this. That at some point in time will, I guarantee you, have a challenge. But are we going to be the county that just stands here and says, sure, they said it, so we're going to do it? And that's what I want to know. Where is my prosecutor in representing the public?
Said, I am fine if you want to put that opinion on there as well. Uh, because I would absolutely love to read that. Response. I just don't think, I think it's going to come in as I don't see a legal question here. Because there's. There's no way he's going on the record.
And it probably wouldn't be a legal question. It's a question about our relationship of, of what the board sees they need to move forward with versus. Do we have legal counsel to do it?
If this board feels that what FSEC did was wrong. Or unjust or invalid or whatever else, and this board wants to appeal. Did we get to? Or does he said, nope, I don't see a, I don't see a case there, so I'm not going to do it.
And that's what I'm saying. If we, if we don't have that representation.
Do we have the authority to pick and choose if we file an appeal or an objection? Because right now I think we should be filing an injunction.
We cannot file an injunction because we can't hire outside legal counsel. Only he can fire out an injunction as he's our attorney.
Fully understand that. If, but if I went down to Schwartz and Wobbler, whatever attorneys. And said, file me an injunction. They're going to go, you got fifteen hundred bucks? Sure, here it is, whatever. They're fighting on behalf of you. This one's a little different because he's not our attorney. He's the county's attorney. So. He doesn't necessarily represent us. He represents the county and he might believe that. In a different approach. He might have, he might believe that it's just easier to let Cypress Creek come in versus. Potentially getting in a lawsuit where the county can lose two million or five million dollars. In a lawsuit, so it's just easier to cave. Well, that's not maybe the board's opinion. But they might actually see that as being in the best interest of the constituent. So is that really my legal counsel when they don't work for me? And they have a different opinion of county? And those are, that's where we're handicapped. Because we get to fire Schwartz and Wobbler if we don't. If they're, if they're going to refuse to go file an injunction or go, no, you can't appeal that, you'll lose. So I'm not going to do it. So I don't want to look back. And I don't want to lose, so I'm not going to do it.
Well, you're saying me and for me, that term has to change. It has to be. For the people. This is not a small voice. This is just not two county commissioners making this decision or. This is our phone ringing, hearing from our constituents that elected all of us, that elected him. They, this. Again, is a much bigger issue than people are giving it credit for. And, and it is a, a very intrusive, very sad thing for me to watch. This happened, the way the process has happened. We have third generation people that are now not good neighbors. Because there wasn't process and everybody got their due day in court or whatever they needed to work through this over quite a few years. Like any other hard land use thing we've been through. Um, we have hate in the community and I can tell you it will grow. As this moves forward and I want to find a successful way to let this be a public process to show our public, we do support them and we are going to ask those hard questions. And that's my goal here.
I would say minimum.
And I am handicapped.
Thinking about hiring. An outside consultant. Who is not a lawyer. Is just a land use expert. That will be able to advise this board on things it deems. Uh, are against the way it should function or, you know, not giving us legal advice. But is all things FSEC and can fight the county's case on a non-lawyerly level. Uh, that would be a land use expert with. Their testimony being admissible in court later. Um, if need be to rebut any other testimony from said people who aren't land use experts.
And that. We brought that up before and that might not be such a bad fix for this. That might be a way that. We're able to balance these down, you know, or just balance these different. Ordinances and, and combinations and uh, what ifs off of rather than. Um, because legally is his very different sometimes than what we ask.
No.
I hate walking. Well, I, I sat here for a year and you were doing this to Dave Sauter and I couldn't see.
I have a switch.
I tried to back up so you guys can see and then I'm too far away from the mic and then I have.
We're going to get you a little power.
Yes, you'll handle my.
I always got in trouble for being too far away. I guess. A lot of what you're talking about is relationship. And I would advise you, the best thing you can do is go over and sit down with the prosecuting attorney. And help to build your relationship with him to get the answers that you need. There has been, I am sorry, there has been a lot of words thrown around. On a recorded video from this commit, this Board of Commissioners.
And not for me.
About the prosecuting attorney.
And we will stop there because I've had a couple of very bad events. And for me. Working in. Written communication is going to be my best way going forward.
It's going to be my only way going forward.
I, yeah.
Because things get said in private and. You get called all sorts of fun names when there's no evidence that you can prove otherwise. So I will not be having any communications that are not in writing.
Well, that's. Good for the record as well, I guess, to know that, that.
And it needed to be on the record. That that.
No, that's, that's.
That's been a very hard thing for me.
That's, that's great to be on the record. I mean, I've had a lot of really hard conversations with the PA where we've disagreed. Uh, professionally and I still think.
Agreeing unprofessionally. No.
Owen.
Well, we've had plenty of that coming on public record too. It's so.
And not for me.
And I, and I'm not saying it's from you and I'm just saying that, that we're, we've created a bed. That we're now lying in. It's going to make this much more difficult moving forward.
And I've tried for months to change that bed when I came on this board. And I've asked many, many times to change this relationship around to. Use the PA forums to have the PA come in on a workshop and sit down with us. And I didn't get cooperation to get it. We didn't, we weren't able to, able out to ask him to. So these relationships have stood and I've gotten drug into the history. So for me, I have to go forward in a totally professional manner, letter to letter and, and respect to respect and leave it at that.
So then I guess. Then we've, we've now created or we now understand our basis of the relationship. And that is, is that uh. As we went through, remember when we went through our training, it's, it's prosecutor by statute, not by choice. And so that's a two-way relationship, right? And so if.
There was more to that training than that, but that's.
Right, but I mean, that was.
Mine was from the attorney.
That was. And, and so right now, we, we, it feels like we want to ask the prosecuting attorney to appeal something. But they haven't actually made a decision yet, so there's no way to appeal it. And so it seems like we're a little bit ahead of the court now.
You can appeal and object to the process as you go. You don't like go to a trial. You're in a murder trial or you're in a trial for holding a party. You're not just going to sit through the trial and listen to all the evidence and your lawyer not say a thing. Until the jury reaches a verdict. And then say appeal. No, you're going to argue the process in the, the evidence as you go. And so what I keep hearing in this county is there's not, no reason for an attorney yet. There hasn't been a decision. Don't you actually fight a case during the case?
Well, and we were told that, that FSEC wouldn't do that, but they do.
So I, I guess.
I've had very, very good success with submitting documentation, but I'm not a lawyer.
Right.
And I'm a county commissioner that's been thrown in that position in the public to try to do that. And I don't want to be in that position. I want legal representation doing that for me. But I need to know, are we on the same page with the prosecutor? Are we moving forward? Knowing we're representing these people to the best. Inch that we can do to get through this process.
How, how can we be on the same page with a prosecutor that we won't sit down and have a conversation with?
If he wants to sit down and have a conversation with the mics on, I'm more than happy to do it. A private conversation in an audience and in a room that is no longer recorded. Absolutely not going to.
So, so again, that's, that's the basis. So there's two things I see and I'm trying to be as logical as possible about this. There's, there's the question. A PA opinion request. Did FSEC follow the Open Public Meetings Act requirements with the process up to this date? And if, if not, what is our recourse? That's as simple as question I can.
But I would also argue on there.
That's not my question.
If they made a determination that is consistent, even though Caranger pulled back, sorry Greg. Even though Caranger pulled back half the documents and they still voted. Is that? Kosher under the law?
So I guess.
That be a, you, you're not doing your job because you didn't even get all the documents and made a decision.
So I, I understand how we feel, but I also want to remind the board that there is an administrative law judge. That is sitting there. During this entire process, an administrative law judge. Someone that has, that, that is on the bar that is required to follow the law and the rules. They are also getting opinions from the state attorney general's office. With regards to when they have questions. If there were, if they were doing anything wildly illegal, I think that an administrative law judge would be pointing that out.
Wildly illegal, yes. Against procedure that would get an objection. Allowed? The judge isn't going to go, um, this guy's lawyer's really bad, so I'm going to object for him and then I'm going to sustain that injunction. No, you just, you get what you get.
That's not how the process has gone though. There hasn't been a back and forth. There's public testimony. We've been giving public testimony. There's no back and forth. This is not in, you know, the law realm of back and forth like that.
We have a difference of opinion and.
But unfortunately, this whole process because of relationships has gotten out of the box. And we could have had a back and forth with legal representation between him garnering. Or any attorney garnering some things for us, uh, just like Benton County has done with outside counsel. And representation at all the meetings and they're seeing and hearing things that they need to ask questions about and, and push for their accounting. We haven't had that. We've had one crack from the planning department and two commissioners.
You, you said it yourself. This is a case being presided over by a judge. Wouldn't you think the county's side would be presided over by counsel? Do you really want a? County commissioner, why don't we just send the janitor?
And that's my question. If, if the PA. Supports the whole process that the administrative judge. Is that, and he has backdrop of attorney general and there's no point in his wasting his time. And being in that room or being on hearings for the people of this county. Then there's no point asking these questions. If that's his stance that by law, that's where he is and what he sees as our counsel. I need to know that. Because I assumed this whole time that he would, he would jump in and weigh in and be there for the things that I thought, wait a minute, this wasn't quite kosher. So here we are today, six months down the line.
And I have a feeling we'll be here six months from now arguing the same topic.
But what I'm saying is we can stop the argument. And if you have crafted questions you'd like to submit, I'd be more than glad to review them and chime in or whatever we need to do. And then this question for me, I can actually, as a commissioner, submit it myself to him and say. For me personally, going forward to work with you, I have to know.
Well, you have my permission because last time I tried that, I couldn't ask a question. It had to come from the board, so I want to make sure I'm on record giving you the second.
I'm confused about that. I need to ask that question. Can he represent us individually or does he have to represent as a board? I have so many questions.
So mine are question, mine are requesting. Counsel be present at FSEC. So if they see something that's wrong, they can advise us that, hey, this went bad, we can appeal this or we can object to that. Or I, I want counsel actually actively involved in the FSEC. Process as it goes. Process as it goes. Because I'm not legal. I don't get to sit in there and I, I might say, well, this didn't look, that looks really fishy. Maybe it's not fishy. Uh but by all means, if it is fishy, shouldn't we object? Shouldn't we be, I mean, then maybe they don't hear our objection, but shouldn't we be objecting?
Get on the record.
Shouldn't we be building evidence in case we are going to appeal in front of somebody that? How do these twenty people make a land use determination when half of the packet isn't even been uh turned in yet? Did, did you, did you make, you know, I mean, to me, that's automatic. Your vote is garbage. Because you were obviously biased and swayed before you read any evidence because you never saw any evidence. Uh but that's an argument if you were actually trying to. Mount a defense so that in case there's an appeal, you can appeal. And maybe the, the argument is we don't have the ability to appeal unless he wants to appeal. I don't know. I have no idea. At this point, I'm absolutely bewildered.
I, I would say that. Process is usually like with SEPA, if we look at the past of this county, whether it's zoning or anything else. The process is usually ends up getting things thrown out. We can remember, look all the way back to the ninety-five, ninety-eight Houston B Z plan update. It's processed. If the FSEC is not following the process. That is all the grounds that's needed for a lawsuit, whether from a county or from an organization. To get that, those decisions thrown out and have to restart the process. So I think there's no problem with asking the question in a P A opinion request. Have they followed the process according to the Open Public Meetings Act? That is, that is a great public uh P A opinion request, I think. Now, putting in a request that, that, that our. Counsel represent us in front of FSEC and in front of. Any other boards with regards to these solar projects, I think that is an absolute okay request. And we also need to know that the answer is going to be what the answer is. Now, I understand if you're asking that question because if you feel like you're not getting representation and they're unwilling to represent you. Under the, the Drummond Island case, Supreme Court case. They have to show that they're unwilling to represent the county and the county's interest.
Right, and that's my argument. I don't know that he has ever said he's unwilling. He's just unwilling to accept our broad definitions. That he interprets as broad definitions. Why I want to make them very specific. So they won't be broad anymore.
But he also, but also when, when you're asking counsel to represent you, the counsel needs to know what they're representing you about and on. Because we can feel as a board, we can feel one way. We can listen to our constituents and feel one way, but the council also has to represent the county. And the county is the county codes and the zoning and everything else. And there's of course room for interpretation in codes and there's room for uh. For, for that to happen and so.
And I think that's why I'm struggling. I went through and I'll say it on. A twenty-year battle from hell with Rails to Trails with two hundred constituents signed on as impacted landowners. Never once did we feel that our county commissioners, our sheriff and our prosecutor wasn't on board. And they weren't representing those people working through the tough, yelling meetings and, and years of things that went on. To get to the bottom of what was going on with those land use planning decisions and the assault on those people's rights. And. For the life of me, I don't know where I'm at in this. I know I represent my people and I know the majority of the people. Uh are impacted and have a lot of questions. And I know that some point in time, this county will see backlash because of that, not just neighbor against neighbor, but we're going to see. People against the county for some decisions that were made or things that we did not uphold for our own county. And Rails to Trails, they were right. It took them fourteen years, but it went to the Supreme Court and it was a takings. That still has to be dealt with and worked through for these people and Parks has to have finally admitted. That it was a takings. They didn't get to just get handed that for a free gift. That didn't happen. This will be the same situation, I guarantee you. And I don't like hate being. Fostered in our communities and in our public, neighbor against neighbor. For fairy tales and stories because someone just wants to move forward with their process. And a state agency says it's okay because I can't tell you even today how many times Parks has said, oh, it's okay. That didn't happen. Not the truth and. That will never go away in those communities. That has pitted people forever against each other. Why should that do that in this valley of Goldendale that has third and fourth generation people? That are intermarried, intermingled, good neighbors forever. And now we've got some that are very close to. Pretty good, solid hate against each other. It's not right. Um and our county should be doing everything they can to correct that situation. And offer a process that's fair and transparent and open and show that we stand for those people. And what they stand for for us. And for the life of me, I can't get to that on this process. I can't work on it that way.
But, but what fair, open, transparent process do we have if the state has preemption?
And then why is our county not coming out above board and standing against the state for doing that and calling them out on it?
But again, it's state law.
I don't care if it's state law. There are good laws and there's bad laws and eventually the bad laws do get challenged and they go away. Even the constitution has challenges. We have lots of state law that's been changed. When we went into the Rails to Trails fight. I had a man named Rich Beatty from Texas way back in the eighties. That said to me, Mrs. Zoller, it's a law and it'll be an act of God if you do anything about that. And I said, I'm young and I'll fight through this and we did. And we got it all the way to the Supreme Court and they said, yeah, great law, but that was a takings. Things get challenged. Things should be challenged. That's the process. And I'm saying I see this as something we should be challenging for our people and we're not.
So do you, do you think that we need to sue the state? About FSEC's validity under state law or are you saying we need to work with our representatives? To change FSEC's powers?
I'm saying we need a process to decide that, that is a full-on engaged. Legal counsel that can answer all of the, and I've explained this to the prosecutor. This is a daily life-eating process. That is a sinkhole drain that you have to catch every little nuance that goes by you that I'm gonna have a question about. And I need to have. Access not ten days later, not five days later, but sometimes that day I need to pick up the phone and say. Or have, send an email now and say, hey, what about this and have that answer back. To work through something as tough as this change, and I don't care what anybody says, it's a change from valuable resource land to industry. And we preempted the processes. But a pig is a pig and this is what it is. And we, we have to not call it something else, but look at it and do the right thing with it.
I guess I will. Get a word in edgewise, right? Uh so unlike me. I, I guess I keep hearing that trust the process. Trust the process of the FSEC thing. If it goes bad, we can appeal later. The citizens of this county heard trust the process for two years and knew they were getting the train rolled over their back. Trust the process and now they're hearing it again, which is pretty much just, I guess, let FSEC do their thing and we'll just, I'd have what we can do. Wifi and that's just not, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I disagree, but in the same regard. I'm not that gonna be the one going to the FSEC meetings and fighting on the county's behalf because I don't have the legal background to do that. So going forward, um if anybody's fighting on the county's behalf. I guess it's either Ms. Zoller or the county's not showing up. Um to fight on its behalf at these, at these land use hearings because I, I'm not going on the record and doing. And or saying things that could actually undermine our case going forward.
So again, though, you know, it's. For most of this, it's, we ask staff, we have staff and we also have a prosecuting attorney. We ask staff to come up and review the document. And come up with comments, comments and questions and everything else. FSEC will make a determination on land use consistency. They're going to do that and even if we started today, they're probably going to rule according to the. Capital Press article very shortly.
So we.
Once they rule, we get a chance to review that. We can then say, we think that there's viability of appeal. And we can ask for uh a uh executive session with the prosecuting attorney. And say, these are the issues that we see with their consistency determination findings of fact or whatever. We would like you to appeal this.
So.
And then you can say yes, no, or whatever, right?
You can negate that effort. FSEC processes, I think, did they allow us four days to get those documents in before they're like, whoops. Gotta have your documents in. It was a struggle uh. And conversations. To agree to get the planning department to answer FSEC's call. Then we reached out after the fact to road department and everyone else who had no time. And did an excellent effort in throwing it together so we could get something in. Then we had more time and I brought it up several times. What are the departments doing? Are we answering things that are coming in? Are we reviewing them or? Then the answer was, I got, no, they did their effort. Don't, don't go any further there. They've got their documents in. And we're moving towards a public hearing, the only one we're gonna get during a public hearing. Which was crucial. It's the only legal one we get. The only ones online making the choice to be there for our county and for the people of the county. Were me and Mr. Christopher. No planning department, um no legal representation. I was mystified by the choices and it was my assumption. That people were on the same page and moving the same way I was and evidently I'm the only one on this bus.
Yeah, there might be two of us on the bus.
Yeah, and thank you for your efforts and you, you know, you did speak well and brought up what you need to be. But that isn't the way this process should have been gone. Like I said, when I've done processes before, everyone is coordinated. Cooperation, documents coming in, uh reviews for the county. Uh for their safety and the Rails to Trails situation, advice for them and I hate referring back to that, but that's the only thing that I can see that we've had this kind of. Needed coordination between landowners and constituents, thousands of them, not just a couple. And our county staff and legal representation and law and sheriff. We're just not a gelled effort going forward. We are this fractured mess of maybe FSEC will say tomorrow we have to do this and we, we try to do it. As commissioners, we try to have staff do it. That's not planning. That's not a concerted effort. That's not on the same page showing. Our county what we represent.
So if you, if you feel we're a fractured group, are you advising that we hold a workshop and invite? Uh the sheriff, the press, the prosecuting attorney, all of our staff and talk about this process and where this process is going and ask the prosecuting attorney. To explain the process and at what opportunities we're gonna have to comment and what we're doing?
I think we've let it go so far down the road, the clock is ticking. And it's a very weird thing to me that once we have a public meeting and say anything that all of a sudden the next day FSEC comes out with something and does it. Because look out, Clickjack County might be coming. It's not random. It's, it's. An intentional movement to move things down the line because someone else sees how they should be going and we should have no business sticking our nose into it. And we should have organized in the beginning and made sure everybody was on the same page at that time. For me, if I could understand if the prosecutor even sees it, and I respect his. Right to have his opinion. If he doesn't see. That he can support us legally in the manner I'm talking about and that he thinks I'm out to lunch, then he needs to tell me. Um because this is my stance and I will not get off of it for the people.
Okay.
Right or wrong.
If that's what you're looking for and you want the prosecutor to tell you if you're out to lunch or not, how do you get that?
I can send him a P A request. I can do that myself for my own self. What? And I wrote down my points of what we've talked about, what I need and Mr. Christopher, you have your questions that I support that. I believe as a board, I would support your questions as a board. I haven't read them yet, but I'd like to see them.
I say mine aren't more of a question. It's more of a request that counsel actually partakes in all FSEC.
And I will stand behind those.
Cause then hopefully if they see something that's, hey, this is a little fishy, they'll actually tell us.
And any more debate uh or questions aren't gonna change those two things. I think we may as well not waste our time or the public's time, but get this done. Move on.
I, I would agree. This is a contentious issue in the public. It's caused neighbors to hate neighbors. I personally have absolutely zero doubt. I'm on the vast majority side. Uh and I also have zero doubt that in future elections, it will clean up itself. So. Till then, we take what we get.
So I, I, may I, Commissioner? I would say that um in the past, Commissioner Christopher, you've stated that you would never want to. Uh remove so, one of the Board of Commissioners access to counsel. And I would like to stand um and state that I agree with that and that. Um if you have any P A opinion requests, I will always support that as a question to the P A because. If you have questions, you deserve to have those questions answered. Um and. And, and that goes for, of course, Commissioner Zoller as well. And so I understand that what Commissioner Zoller is primarily talking about is, has been a P A opinion request. Some of what is being discussed is not a P A opinion request. It's a P A request.
Yeah.
We are asking you to do this.
Correct.
And while that uh, that's different than asking for a legal opinion, that's asking for legal, you go do this. Um I understand the relationship uh difficulties and so that it, it's difficult to just go and have a sit-down conversation. Um to get those answers. Um and if you would like to ask the P A or Rebecca, I mean. Uh to attend these meetings, I would hope that they are attending the meetings and reviewing them, but if you'd like to, to ask them for. An actual request, I can be supportive of that because I think that it is in the best interest of the county to have. To have all the county's interests um always being looked at. Uh when it comes to uh if we're going to, to try to take this one step further and say, we don't like the P A's answer. Or we don't like the P A's opinion, uh or how are the P A's going to work and we would like to take that to the Superior Court. To me, from my readings of the Drummond case, um that's gonna be a colossal waste of, of county resources. And, and even in the Drummond case, it clearly points out if, if you don't like the P A, there is one really big thing you can do and that's the next election. But until then, there's nothing that we can do and, and while it can be aggravating, aggravating and frustrating for me. I also recognize that this is one of the reasons for the separation of powers. And the separation of duties and the reason that the founders of this state.
And that goes both ways.
And it goes both ways and that's exactly my point. And so while I may not like things, I have to live with them and. Um if anything, I, it is my goal to hopefully repair the repu- the relationship. Uh with the prosecuting attorney over time and it's not gonna happen overnight uh with the board and the P A. Uh because I think that if you have a good relationship with your prosecuting attorney. Uh everything goes smoothly, everything goes far easily and while you can agree to disagree and you can agree to have. Some really hard discussions, um it's always my goal to try to have those be respectful discussions and respectful disagreements and I know. Commissioner Christopher tries very hard with me to have respectful dis- disagreements.
Not, I don't disagree. I just, I'm, again, I, I, I will have a working relationship with anybody that's willing to have a working relationship. Um but uh. You know, again. you know, again, is it possible to repair relationships? Some of them, sure. Others? Sometimes people say things that that are very hurtful and undermining and mean and bullying and disrespectful that, yeah, no, that's going to take a lot of repair to get to the bottom of that. Sure. So with that, it's more of a, let's just, I'll do my job, you do your job. And I'll follow your procedure. You follow my procedure and you, you get along. You don't, I mean, it, it's the same thing if they elected a completely crazy liberal, you know, person as a commissioner. I think we could actually hold board meetings and get along and function and, and you agree to disagree on an issuing, move on. So it's not that you can't work with another elected if they're a different opinion or a different matter or a different sex or a different nationality or anything else. But again, there has to be a joint respect there. And if there is zero respect given, don't expect any back. So that, that's all I have to say on this topic. I'm willing to move forward in any direction anybody's willing to move because I think just sitting here
Yeah.
gets nothing done. And that's kind of where we're stuck at this time.
You do know, we talk for a living.
I'm trying to talk less. When was that today? I totally forgot that. We went, we went right past that. It may not take forever, so I wouldn't mind giving it three minutes and a scenario and see if there is debate. Cause they were supposed to look at that and see if they, so essentially we had a workshop, we've been through this before. Kavanaugh drafted up this thing or the policy wanted our opinion on if it needed any changes before it goes to legal counsel because he was going to just send it over there. And I want to make sure we don't have changes before it goes over there because there's no reason to bug the prosecutor twice. So I would like it to be more in our final draft form before it goes over there. So is there changes that need to be made? And if so, then we can have a workshop where we discuss it. Or if you looked at it and you didn't see changes, nothing screamed at you that, hey, let's go to council and then if something screams at me later, we'll worry about it. Which way do you want to go on? That's where I'm here today. I'm, I'm ready to send it over and nothing else screams at me out there. Not saying nothing doesn't come up next month and I'm like, ooh, didn't think about that.
Just clarifying for me, we're talking about domestic use.
Truck potable water.
For domestic use, not for commercial. Okay. And I'm good. It can go to the prosecutor.
I reviewed the document and this is policy. And I think this is a great way to do it and it's just including it in the policy. And I think David did a fabulous job drafting it. And I would thank, thank Mr. Kavanaugh very much for all of his hard work and effort on this. And I have no problem sending it to the prosecutor.
Backing up, we did one of our normal things we do. We moved on. I'm not sure what decision we made with, are you going to share what directives you'd like to ask the prosecutor for? So we can add in or trim or change so that can go today? Are you moving forward with that?
It sounds like the answer is yes, but change the wording. It sounds like the answer is not to ask for outside counsel, but asking him to partage in the FSEC meetings and, and whatnot. So I will lighten up my wordage.
Correct. Because due to his answers, he says he's willing and available.
There you go. So until he tells me otherwise, I'm just going to assume it's him. So let me take some wording out and then I will.
Okay.
Now that we backed up, I think I heard we're a yes on the potable water. So please tell Kavanaugh to that, thank you for all this time, but let's get that thing turned in so we can get moving on it. It's only been a year and a half. All right. Anything else? The other fun?
I guess I have one more question because I am unclear. Is the board, does the board approve, I asked the prosecutor a singular question that seems to bother me? Or do we have to make a board decision and vote so that, does he answer singular commissioners? Or does he answer just the board? Another question.
I guess I can only speculate. I believe he's already went on record saying he works for the county, which is the board, not for elected officials. So if we're, he's going to give a legal opinion, he's giving the legal opinion for the county, not individual elected officials. So it took a preponderance of the board or the board chair to do legal opinion. I believe that's the way it was asked back before, which is why I ended up having to go get a second vote to get a legal opinion. If you want to re-ask that question, because maybe my interpretation is funny. Or we can just have a second vote for all legal opinions from any of the commissioners going forward. Which I find too, that which eliminates the question.
And I, Mr. Anderson said he is in favor of whoever needs legal counsel can ask those things that you would always support that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, i- 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 it's almost to the point where it has to be because that's the only way that either of my seatmates will have any communication with, with the county's counsel. So of course, the more communication you can have with council, the better off the county will be.
So with.
Don't disagree.
With that, then we would consider anything that each of us send is actually from the board because we all represent the board.
Yep. I, I would say that's a verbal yes. And if we need to make a policy and sign a resolution on it, we'll do. I've got all these papers to sign and I have a phone call in six minutes. So that ain't gonna happen.
Will be done?
I am.
Vouchers to sign.
Mr. Chairman, being that you have a meeting in six minutes, I would make a motion to adjourn the regularly scheduled meeting of the Clickatack County Board of County Commissioners, noting that our next meeting will not be next Tuesday as it will be July 4th holiday and that we will be meeting on Wednesday, July 5th, beginning at 10:00 AM. And with that, my motion is to adjourn.
And I'll second.
I will take the motion in the second to adjourn and note that yes, we are not meeting on the 4th of July, but I hope everybody attends the demolition derby and has a good time and supports your local community, the vendors and the children. And with that, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I didn't hear you, but I, I think you were there.